To a Beaufort County Council meeting of May 28, 2024, may I call this meeting to order?
Yes.
And would you please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance and the invocation by Councilmember Tab Tavernier.
Pledge of Allegiance. United States of America, in this republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Gracious Lord, in honor of the recent Memorial Day weekend, guide us to remember and give thanks for those who have given their lives in service to the country. When their need was greatest, they stepped forward and did their duty to defend the freedoms we enjoy today. We must remember, freedom is not free. There are times when it has a cost, and it's indeed dear. Never let us forget who paid the ultimate price to ensure that freedom would be our legacy. Help us as council members be worthy of their sacrifice through our actions today and every time we meet in the future. We ask this in your name, Lord. Amen.
Thank you very much. Please be seated. Public notification of this meeting has been published, posted, and distributed in compliance with the South Carolina Freedom of Information Act. For those of you wondering who I am, my name is Larry McGowan. I'm the Vice Chair of Council. Chairman Passment is not with us this evening, other than he may occasionally, he may show up a bit later on on Zoom link. I'd also like to extend the welcome to a guest we have here tonight, sitting in the back, Mr. Michael R. Moore, who is standing right now. He is a candidate for the position of Beaufort County Administrator, and I'd like to welcome him to Beaufort County tonight. Thanks for coming, Mr. Moore. I'd like to, item number four, which is approval of the agenda, I would like to amend the agenda, and I would like to insert, after the approval of the minutes, as item 5A, one of the items from the executive session. So I'm going to amend the agenda to include an executive session section.
Item 29.
Dealing with item 29, which is pursuant to South Carolina Code Section 30-4-70A1, to engage in discussions incident to the employment, appointment, or compensation of a person regulated by a public body. We will leave this room and go into the Executive Conference Room, where we should probably be only for about five minutes, and then we will come back out and determine whether an action has to be taken as a result of that executive session.
I will make that motion to amend that agenda for you, Mr. Chairman.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Octavia O'Brenner, if you missed the person making the motion or the second, please stop me until we get that clarified. Thank you very much. Okay. Is there any discussion on amending the agenda? Okay, hearing no discussion, I will approve this amended agenda, the amendment to the agenda, without objection, and then I will seek approval of the agenda with the amendment in it.
Some of this chairman.
Thank you. Second, Mr. Martholomew. Okay. Is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion, I will approve the agenda as amended, without objection. Any objections? Seeing none, the agenda is approved. Seeking number five, a motion to approve the minutes from the special county council meeting of April 24, 2024.
I'll make the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Second. Any discussion? Any corrections? Seeing no discussion or corrections, the amendments have been approved without objection, and we will now recess to go into executive session as item 5A.
Make that motion to go into executive session.
Section Code 3470. Thank you.
And I'll second it.
Thank you. Any discussion about going into executive session? Seeing none, we will move into executive session without objection. Thank you very much.
And I'll second it.
Thank you. Any discussion about going into executive session? Seeing none, we will move into executive session without objection. Thank you very much.
And I'll second it.
Thank you. Any discussion about going into executive session? Seeing none, we will move into executive session without objection. Thank you very much.
And I'll second it.
Thank you. Any discussion about going into executive session? Seeing none, we will move into executive session without objection. Thank you very much.
And I'll second it.
Thank you. Any discussion about going into executive session? Seeing none, we will move into executive session without objection. Thank you very much.
And I'll second it.
Thank you. Any discussion about going into executive session? Seeing none, we will move into executive session without objection. Thank you very much.
And I'll second it.
Thank you. Any discussion about going into executive session? Seeing none, we will move into executive session without objection. Thank you very much.
And I'll second it.
Thank you. Any discussion about going into executive session? Seeing none, we will move into executive session without objection. Thank you very much.
And I'll second it.
Thank you. Any discussion about going into executive session? Seeing none, we will move into executive session without objection. Thank you very much.
And I'll second it.
Thank you. Any discussion about going into executive session? Seeing none, we will move into executive session without objection. Thank you very much.
And I'll second it.
Thank you. Any discussion about going into executive session? Seeing none, we will move into executive session without objection. Thank you very much.
And I'll second it.
Thank you. Any discussion about going into executive session? Seeing none, we will move into executive session without objection. Thank you very much.
And I'll second it.
Thank you. Any discussion about going into executive session? Seeing none, we will move into executive session without objection. Thank you very much.
And I'll second it.
Thank you. Any discussion about going into executive session? Seeing none, we will move into executive session without objection. Thank you very much.
And I'll second it.
Thank you. Any discussion about going into executive session? Seeing none, we will move into executive session without objection. Thank you very much.
And I'll second it.
Thank you. Any discussion about going into executive session? Seeing none, we will move into executive session without objection. Thank you very much.
And I'll second it.
Thank you. Any discussion about going into executive session? Seeing none, we will move into executive session without objection. Thank you very much.
And I'll second it.
Thank you. Any discussion about going into executive session? Seeing none, we will move into executive session without objection. Thank you very much.
And I'll second it.
Thank you. Any discussion about going into executive session? Seeing none, we will move into executive session without objection. Thank you very much.
And I'll second it.
Thank you. Any discussion about going into executive session? Seeing none, we will move into executive session without objection. Thank you very much.
And I'll second it.
Thank you. Any discussion about going into executive session? Seeing none, we will move into executive session without objection. Thank you very much.
And I'll second it.
Thank you. Any discussion about going into executive session? Seeing none, we will move into executive session without objection. Thank you very much.
And I'll second it.
Thank you. Any discussion about going into executive session? Seeing none, we will move into executive session without objection. Thank you very much.
And I'll second it.
Thank you. Any discussion about going into executive session? Seeing none, we will move into executive session without objection. Thank you very much.
And I'll second it.
Thank you. Any discussion about going into executive session? Seeing none, we will move into executive session without objection. Thank you very much.
And I'll second it.
Thank you. Any discussion about going into executive session? Seeing none, we will move into executive session without objection. Thank you very much.
And I'll second it.
Thank you. Any discussion about going into executive session? Seeing none, we will move into executive session without objection. Thank you very much.
And I'll second it.
Thank you. Any discussion about going into executive session? Seeing none, we will move into executive session without objection. Thank you very much.
And I'll second it.
Thank you. Any discussion about going into executive session? Seeing none, we will move into executive session without objection. Thank you very much.
And I'll second it.
Thank you. Any discussion about going into executive session? Seeing none, we will move into executive session without objection. Thank you very much.
And I'll second it.
Thank you. Any discussion about going into executive session? Seeing none, we will move into executive session without objection. Thank you very much.
And I'll second it.
Thank you. Any discussion about going into executive session? Seeing none, we will move into executive session without objection. Thank you very much.
And I'll second it.
Thank you. Any discussion about going into executive session? Seeing none, we will move into executive session without objection. Thank you very much.
And I'll second it.
Thank you. Any discussion about going into executive session? Seeing none, we will move into executive session without objection. Thank you very much.
And I'll second it.
Thank you. Any discussion about going into executive session? Seeing none, we will move into executive session without objection. Thank you very much.
And I'll second it.
Thank you. Any discussion about going into executive session? Seeing none, we will move into executive session without objection. Thank you very much.
And I'll second it.
Thank you. Any discussion about going into executive session? Seeing none, we will move into executive session without objection. Thank you very much.
And I'll second it.
Thank you. Any discussion about going into executive session? Seeing none, we will move into executive session without objection. Thank you very much.
And I'll second it.
Thank you. Any discussion about going into executive session? Seeing none, we will move into executive session without objection. Thank you very much.
And I'll second it.
Thank you. Any discussion about going into executive session? Seeing none, we will move into executive session without objection. Thank you very much.
And I'll second it.
Thank you. Any discussion about going into executive session? Seeing none, we will move into executive session without objection. Thank you very much.
And I'll second it.
Thank you. Any discussion about going into executive session? Seeing none, we will move into executive session without objection. Thank you very much.
And I'll second it.
Thank you. Any discussion about going into executive session? Seeing none, we will move into executive session without objection. Thank you very much.
And I'll second it.
Thank you. Any discussion about going into executive session? Seeing none, we will move into executive session without objection. Thank you very much.
And I'll second it.
Thank you. Any discussion about going into executive session? Seeing none, we will move into executive session without objection. Thank you very much.
And I'll second it.
Thank you. Any discussion about going into executive session? Seeing none, we will move into executive session without objection. Thank you very much.
And I'll second it.
Thank you. Any discussion about going into executive session? Seeing none, we will move into executive session without objection. Thank you very much.
And I'll second it.
Thank you. Any discussion about going into executive session? Seeing none, we will move into executive session without objection. Thank you very much.
And I'll second it.
Thank you. Any discussion about going into executive session? Seeing none, we will move into executive session without objection. Thank you very much.
And I'll second it.
Thank you. Any discussion about going into executive session? Seeing none, we will move into executive session without objection. Thank you very much.
And I'll second it.
Thank you. Any discussion about going into executive session? Seeing none, we will move into executive session without objection. Thank you very much.
And I'll second it.
Thank you. Any discussion about going into executive session? Seeing none, we will move into executive session without objection. Thank you very much.
And I'll second it.
Thank you. Any discussion about going into executive session? Seeing none, we will move into executive session without objection. Thank you very much.
And I'll second it.
Thank you. Any discussion about going into executive session? Seeing none, we will move into executive session without objection. Thank you very much.
And I'll second it.
Thank you. Any discussion about going into executive session? Seeing none, we will move into executive session without objection. Thank you very much.
And I'll second it.
Thank you. Any discussion about going into executive session? Seeing none, we will move into executive session without objection. Thank you very much.
And I'll second it.
Thank you. Any discussion about going into executive session? Seeing none, we will move into executive session without objection. Thank you very much.
And I'll second it.
Thank you. Any discussion about going into executive session? Seeing none, we will move into executive session without objection. Thank you very much.
And I'll second it.
Thank you. Any discussion about going into executive session? Seeing none, we will move into executive session without objection. Thank you very much.
And I'll second it.
Thank you. Any discussion about going into executive session? Seeing none, we will move into executive session without objection. Thank you very much.
And I'll second it.
Thank you. Any discussion about going into executive session? Seeing none, we will move into executive session without objection. Thank you very much.
And I'll second it.
Thank you. Any discussion about going into executive session? Seeing none, we will move into executive session without objection. Thank you very much.
And I'll second it.
Thank you. Any discussion about going into executive session? Seeing none, we will move into executive session without objection. Thank you very much.
And I'll second it.
Thank you. Any discussion about going into executive session? Seeing none, we will move into executive session without objection. Thank you very much.
And I'll second it.
Thank you. Any discussion about going into executive session? Seeing none, we will move into executive session without objection. Thank you very much.
And I'll second it.
Thank you. Any discussion about going into executive session? Seeing none, we will move into executive session without objection. Thank you very much.
And I'll second it.
Thank you. Any discussion about going into executive session? Seeing none, we will move into executive session without objection. Thank you very much.
And I'll second it.
Thank you. Any discussion about going into executive session? Seeing none, we will move into executive session without objection. Thank you very much.
And I'll second it.
Thank you. Any discussion about going into executive session? Seeing none, we will move into executive session without objection. Thank you very much.
And I'll second it.
Thank you. Any discussion about going into executive session? Seeing none, we will move into executive session without objection. Thank you very much.
And I'll second it.
Thank you. Any discussion about going into executive session? Seeing none, we will move into executive session without objection. Thank you very much.
And I'll second it.
Thank you. Any discussion about going into executive session? Seeing none, we will move into executive session without objection. Thank you very much.
And I'll second it.
Thank you. Any discussion about going into executive session? Seeing none, we will move into executive session without objection. Thank you very much.
And I'll second it.
Thank you. Any discussion about going into executive session? Seeing none, we will move into executive session without objection. Thank you very much.
And I'll second it.
Thank you. Any discussion about going into executive session? Seeing none, we will move into executive session without objection. Thank you very much.
And I'll second it.
Thank you. Any discussion about going into executive session? Seeing none, we will move into executive session without objection. Thank you very much.
And I'll second it.
Thank you. Any discussion about going into executive session? Seeing none, we will move into executive session without objection. Thank you very much.
And I'll second it.
Thank you. Any discussion about going into executive session? Seeing none, we will move into executive session without objection. Thank you very much.
And I'll second it.
Thank you. Any discussion about going into executive session? Seeing none, we will move into executive session without objection. Thank you very much.
And I'll second it.
Thank you. Any discussion about going into executive session? Seeing none, we will move into executive session without objection. Thank you very much.
And I'll second it.
Thank you. Any discussion about going into executive session? Seeing none, we will move into executive session without objection. Thank you very much.
And I'll second it.
Thank you. Any discussion about going into executive session? Seeing none, we will move into executive session without objection. Thank you very much.
And I'll second it.
Thank you. Any discussion about going into executive session? Seeing none, we will move into executive session without objection. Thank you very much.
And I'll second it.
Thank you. Any discussion about going into executive session? Seeing none, we will move into executive session without objection. Thank you very much.
And I'll second it.
Thank you. Any discussion about going into executive session? Seeing none, we will move into executive session without objection. Thank you very much.
And I'll second it.
Thank you. Any discussion about going into executive session? Seeing none, we will move into executive session without objection. Thank you very much.
And I'll second it.
Thank you. Any discussion about going into executive session? Seeing none, we will move into executive session without objection. Thank you very much.
And I'll second it.
Thank you. Any discussion about going into executive session? Seeing none, we will move into executive session without objection. Thank you very much.
And I'll second it.
Thank you. Any discussion about going into executive session? Seeing none, we will move into executive session without objection. Thank you very much.
And I'll second it.
Thank you. Any discussion about going into executive session? Seeing none, we will move into executive session without objection. Thank you very much.
And I'll second it.
Thank you. Any discussion about going into executive session? Seeing none, we will move into executive session without objection. Is there any objection?
No.
We have unanimity, and I would like to then have this motion passed and congratulate Mr. Moore for being selected as the new Beaufort County Administrator. Mr. Moore, would you be kind enough to join me at the podium? What? I'd like to offer my congratulations. I just wanted to.
Are you still on the table?
No. What I would like to do is introduce Mr. Moore to the council again, stand behind me, and to all of you again, and to anyone who may be looking at the county channel. So it's my pleasure to introduce to you Michael R. Moore, who has been selected as the Beaufort County Administrator. Mr. Moore currently serves as the Assistant County Manager in York County, South Carolina, where there is a population of 295,000 people with an operating budget of $459 million. Mr. Moore is a 27-year veteran of the Navy. He was a commissioned officer and a naval aviator. He served as the Chief of Staff to the Commander of the Navy Region Mid-Atlantic in Norfolk, Virginia, which is the largest of 10 Navy regions worldwide, with 72 installations and facilities in 20 states in the northeastern U.S. The Moore was also the commanding officer of Naval Support Activity Suda Bay in Crete, Greece, with a customer base of 1,200 people with an operating budget of $17 million. He was also the Director of Operations and Plans for the Commander of the Carrier Strike Group Five in Yokosuka, Japan. He was also a Legislative Fellow in the Office of Navy Legislative Affairs in Washington, D.C., where he served on the Washington, D.C. staff of a U.S. Senator on the Senate Armed Services Committee. The Moore was also the Deputy Division Director for the Joint Chiefs of Staff, J-8, at the Pentagon in Washington, D.C. He received his education at the United States Naval Academy, where he received a Bachelor of Science in General Engineering. He then went to the University of Tennessee Space Institute, where he received the Master of Science in Aviation Systems. He then went to the University of Maryland, where he received the Master of Science in Accounting and Financial Management, and then the Naval Postgraduate School in Monterey as a Navy Senior Leader Seminar. Mr. Moore has been appointed by unanimous consent of council to the position of Beaufort County Administrator. He has the full confidence and full support of council. We wish him good luck and good fortune as he assumes the duties of the position of Beaufort County Administrator. I would now like to invite Mr. Moore to make remarks to council and to those who are assembled here, and to anyone who is watching us, sometimes by chance, on the Beaufort County Channel. So come on up, Mr. Moore.
Good evening, everyone. I know Chairman Passment is not here with us, but Vice Chairman McGowan, members of council, elected officials, county staff, and citizens of Beaufort County. Good evening. Honored and privileged to be here. This county council has voted to appoint me as county administrator. I'm humbled that you all place this trust and confidence in me. For council, I look forward to getting to know each of you, using learning about each of your districts and building community relationships. I'll strive each day to develop, maintain trust and credibility as I execute my prescribed duties. For county staff, it's an honor to be joining a great team that is clearly dedicated to providing quality public services. I'm eager to get to know you all, learn what you do, and visit you and your workplaces or job sites. Initial areas of focus for me are the organizational structure, processes, and collaborative methods. My intent is to listen to each and every one of you so that I can better determine how I, as the administrator, can help ensure your success and take customer service to the next level. To the citizens of Beaufort County, I'm truly excited for the opportunity to serve you all, visit your communities, and see how we can sustain improved county services and help ensure quality of life. As a U.S. Navy veteran and former installation commanding officer, I look forward to the opportunity to serve and support our military installations. I'd like to recognize and thank the York County Council, manager's office, department directors, staff, and entire organization for the opportunity to serve the citizens of York County over the past three and a half years. Last but not least, I'd like to recognize and thank my family for their love and support. I want Jennifer and I to look forward to settling here in Beaufort County. We anticipate having our sons, daughter-in-law, and grandchildren spend time with us in this beautiful community. Closing, I would like to once again thank the county council for placing trust and confidence in me as the next county administrator. I look forward to seeing you all on July 1st.
I'm going to take a picture. It's probably not fair just to take a picture of Mike and I. If anybody on council would like to join us for the picture, I'll invite you down as long as it doesn't take a long time to get down.
Larry.
Would you like to stand over by the flags and things? Yeah? Mike, come on up. I appreciate you.
Tab, I can't see you. Mr. Glover, take a big step to your left.
Big step.
Big step. All right. Big smile, everybody. Look at me, three, two, one.
At the end of this unanimous induction, I have a gift to give, Mr. Moore. Next year's budget book. Would you take it home?
I like reading it. Already.
I'd just like to take one moment here to thank John Robinson for his service as the interim county administrator. He stepped up when we needed him, and he's done an outstanding job for us here as the interim county administrator. So our thanks, our hats off to him, and our thanks from everybody here on council, all the staff, and I suppose all of you here as well. So thank you very much, John. No. Thanks, though. Okay.
And Mr. Moore just found out what it's like when Larry gets a microphone.
For those of you who may be wondering, Mr. Moore will be reporting for duty on July 1st. Okay, we are back to the agenda, and the agenda item number six is the Administrator's report. So I'll invite the interim county administrator to come forward with that report. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, Chairman and Council, or Vice Chair. Again, I'd like to welcome Mr. Moore. It's great to have another Navy veteran amongst our staff. I was, the auditor and I were talking just before, and I think we might have him outnumbered at this point, but there's many Marines here as well. So our county is filled with veterans. All right. Well, thank you so much. I think when you asked me to serve as acting in an interim in July of last year, that time has gone by a fast 10 months. It's gone by so quickly. I told you then that I would lead with character and integrity, and I will continue to do that until Mr. Moore comes onboard and we transition fully. So he will have my full support, as do you, until such time that we finish that transition. This evening, I would like to talk with you a little bit about people. Each week, I get to go to HR and visit orientation. Every week, there's a different number of folks, but what I'm finding is a growing number, the first, usually it's Mondays, but this week it was this morning, there's a growing number of new employees. A year ago, I might see two or three people each Monday morning, and this morning, there was nearly 10. So this is a great trend for Beaufort County, to hire that many employees every single week. I want to encourage you, if the public is listening there, to look at our website. There are lots of job openings, lots of opportunities, 41 different departments, and more than 1,000 employees. Plenty of things to do for Beaufort County. It's a great place to work, so take a look at it. Look at our contacts in Human Resources, and our personnel specialists will help find a job for you. All right. That being said, I'd like to introduce, to recognize a few employees today. Our first employee is from the Information Technology Division, is Taitia Evans. Taitia?
Did I do it right?
Yes, sir.
See, I wrote it down specially. All right. So Taitia has worked for Beaufort County for 10 years, but not all of that time in IT. So what she does for us tonight, right now, is maintain our computer systems, network, and infrastructure for all the county departments, analyzes problems, improves system efficiency and security. She also provides a daily resource for all IT-related questions and issues occurring throughout the county. She responds to various levels of technology issues, ranging from no experience to a high level of experience. So some of these things can be very complicated. I'm usually the complicated one. There's something about them I can't figure out. So it's very helpful to have folks on staff that you can call when you need them right now. We have become addicted to our computers and our software and technology, so when it's not working properly, we're in bad shape. So Taitia was working for the magistrate court. She worked for the court system for eight and a half years, which is a big departure from information technology. Her willingness to learn is one of many things that she loves about herself and is always a goal to be teachable. So that's really awesome. Did you want to address council?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I just want to stand and say thank you to my department, our ACA, Patrick Hill, our director, Shakia Polite. I just want to thank them for just giving me an opportunity to try something new after being somewhere for eight and a half years knowing that routine. I walked into a department that was willing to show me and teach me along the way, and I got the opportunity to meet new people every day and to make sure that their day-to-day is going forward. I also wanted to share that I did work with then Judge McGowan. For about seven years, we worked together.
Right.
So again, I just wanted to thank my department. I am a little nervous. I am surprised, but I just feel like my hard work has showed off, and I am going to continue to provide for Beaufort County. This has been 10 great years. I'm from Beaufort County. I've graduated from Battery Creek. I just more recently graduated from Technical College at the Low Country. So yes, I am a Low Country girl, but thank you.
Hey, John, it's great to see Taitia recognized here tonight. We spent a lot of time together when I was on the magistrate's court, and she was always there, always reliable, conscientious, and thorough, and I relied on her for an awful lot. So thanks very much for all that time. Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
She must be a saint for putting up with Larry that long.
Awesome. All right. Next, I'm going to introduce you to Jessica Snowden. Jessica could not be here tonight, but she does have a picture. Jessica works in our purchasing department. She is our P-card administrator. I speak to Jessica two or three times a week. Everything that happens with our P-cards, our purchasing card system, Jessica manages. She's very good at her job. She understands all the rules and misses nothing. Jessica serves as our procurement card administrator, who manages and coordinates Beaufort County P-card system. She reviews P-card purchases. I'm not sure if that's her goat, but, yeah, that's not a dog.
Where's the Lula when you need her?
What's that?
Where's the Lula?
Yeah. So she not only creates new P-cards, she makes any P-card adjustments that have to be done. Those adjustments are done via memorandum, so they come back to the administrator for any adjustments in P-cards. Excuse me. She monitors monthly our P-card integrity system, and she watches the reoccurring purchases and spending on our P-cards. So anything that doesn't look quite right, we get information about. She spends all of her time outside, being a wife and a mom to her four children, including one baby, new baby girl who was born in October. She loves spending time with her family and often goes to Universal Studios because she's a huge Harry Potter fan. That's what she says. Thank you, Jessica, for all that you do. She does a lot for me personally. Thanks so much. And then we have Shanika Galloway. Shanika's here? Yes, she is. Shanika works for the auditor, Mr. Cadd, right? How are you?
Great.
All right. So Shanika is a Tax Analyst III. She's worked for Beaufort County for 17 years as a tax analyst. She is responsible for monthly processing of more than 900, yes, vehicle taxes. Yes, that's a lot. I get it. More than 900. There are 120-day motor vehicle accounts. So she ensures accuracy for taxation. She calculates, creates, or processes refunds or other personal, or processes refunds for other personal property. She also completes these tasks while handling about 2,000 tax-related scenarios by phone or email. Just in the last month, she is the essence of a team player, adaptable, aware of other people's needs, reliable, and never complains. She is a valuable team member, as proven by the staff selecting her as Employee of the Quarter. Yeah, hopefully, we're going to replace that.
She's working on it.
Yes. It's annoying. One speaker up there that is crackling, sorry about that. So Shanika loves hunting, fishing, motorcycle riding, four-wheeling. I used to have them, but I had to sell them. Horses, and eating wild game. Would you like to address council? Say hello?
Hello.
Hello.
I don't know how to come after who was ahead of me, but I just want to say thank you all for the opportunity. I've enjoyed my time here, and I look forward to the future. Just thank you to my supervisors. And that's it. Thank you.
Sir, that concludes my report.
Thank you, John. Appreciate it. Now I'll move on to item seven, which is a year-to-date presentation of the financial reports for the general fund, the capital improvement fund, and all enterprise funds. Denise Christmas will be making this presentation. You doing all of those?
Yes, sir.
Wow.
You got them? Okay. All right. Let's start with the general fund. Look at this, 1,000. What do you have?
They were saying, I thought 6.5.
There should be more in there. Yeah, that, that thing. Yeah. All right. So we'll start with the general fund, the biggie.
Can you make it bigger? Okay. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Well, she's making that bigger. Let me grab mine.
Thank you.
Okay, so to date, or as of last week, our revenues in the general fund, we've collected $141.2 million of our $148.2 million budget. So we've collected 85% of our revenues in the general fund. Our expenditures are at 83%, at $122.5 million. So our net gain to date is $18.6 million in the general fund. I'm anticipating salaries projected out through year-end, we'll spend another $9 million, non-million dollars, $9 million in salaries and fringes. And so insurance also will probably spend another $1.5 million. And our collections of revenue, big items that we have not received to date are state aid. That's about $3.5 million that we will receive from the state in August. Homestead is another $2 million in revenue that we will be receiving, and our motor carrier fees of about $150,000. With all of these items combined, I'm projecting a fund balance increase this year of $5 to $6 million. Last year, our fund balance decreased by $4 million. This year, it'll go up, I'm projecting, by $5 to $6 million, maybe more, depending on the spending through year-end, through June 30th. So that's the general fund budget. Are there any questions about the general fund?
Is that what the fund balance will be, the $5 million?
So, no, sir. We'll add that to our fund balance. Our fund balance is currently $61.3 million, and so we'll be adding to that fund balance. We're required, per our fund balance policy, to maintain a level of 30% of the prior year's expenditures, and that's around 45 to 47 million. And so we're, we have a...
Get access to that. Great.
We have an excess.
Can you say it one more time for the fund balance? What do you think it's going to be? I'm sorry, I got this...
It's currently $61.3 million. I think we're going to end the year and start the new year with about $67 million. That'll put us at about 45% in reserves.
What do most counties keep in reserve?
Most counties keep between 20 and 30%. GAFO, actually, not GAFO, but GFOA suggests two months of operating expenses, to have two months of reserves held in your fund balance. We have, we have more than two months.
Even after we expended some capital projects, funding out of the fund balance, you're still maintaining that?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir, we are. So this year, with our budget amendments that we had, we added about $4.2 million to the line item, to balance the budget, to the line item contributed from prior year fund balance. So we are expecting to use $4.2 million of our reserves in the current budget, and we won't, because our revenue is exceeding our expenditures.
Wow, okay. Denise, if I may, at what point does this warrant either the expending of the fund balance for capital improvements and other things versus the reduction of taxes?
Yeah. So that is definitely a good question. Council can decide, especially during this time, this budget season, they can definitely decide whether they want to, you can do various things. You could do, you could move money from general fund to your capital improvement fund. You can do that by vote, by budget amendment, if you wanted to do that and use the excess funds for capital improvements. Or you could reduce millage this year, if you wanted to do it, if you wanted to do that. But keep in mind that we're issuing bonds, so I wouldn't suggest reducing millage if you're going to have a bond issuance.
What's the general accepted position with regard to how much should be kept in that fund balance for emergencies during the hurricane season in particular? Is there a recommended amount?
Yes, sir. The GFOA recommends two months of your prior operating, prior year's operating expenditures, and the prior year was about $154 million that we spent last year. So if you divide 154 by 12 months, multiply it by two. Does anybody want to do that math?
That's okay. It's somewhere...
Like 25, 26, I don't know.
Interesting question, because the auditor said five to six months.
Mm-hmm.
All right.
They did, yeah.
Probably for your home budget.
The GFOA does recommend two months, but I will, Mr. Glover, most counties do keep five to six months. They do keep 20 to 30% of their prior year.
That's what he said. I asked that question. That's what he said.
Then that number comes up to be...
That's a lot of money.
$65 million.
That's where we are.
Right about where we are.
But you know, every county's different, too. So, you know, being a coastal county, I would suggest a hefty of a fund balance.
I think we need to have some reserve for that was purpose, because we never know. I think when we had Hurricane Matthew, we expended over $25 million for that, and knowing the cost right now, it'll probably be, you know, 30, 40 million. So it's good to have that, but, you know, I think we get to a point that we can start spending out of, you know, that's my opinion.
Find something, right?
Transfer it out. Splash pad.
I was about to say, we just had a great presentation on parking wreck, boat landings. I can find a place for it for the community.
Yeah.
I think that's a conversation then.
Looking forward to it.
We'll go to the next one.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right, Brenna, $5,000. So the next fund will be our garage. It'll be our fleet maintenance fund, and so we are moving this fund, $5,000, into the general fund for the next year's budget.
Talk a little louder.
We're going to be moving Fund 5,000, the garage, into the general fund for next year's budget as a department. So this fund will become obsolete after the year closes, after this fiscal year closes. So this is an internal service fund. It's acting as one now with the supplementation of the general fund dollars. So it's not intended to make money. It's intended to break even. And so what we have right here are our revenues and expenditures to date. Let me flip to my page. Sorry, I'm behind. Okay, so our revenues are 2.9 million. Our expenditures are 2.6 million. Nope, 2.978. For a net loss, there was a typo on this one. It's supposed to be a net loss instead of a net gain, of $78,541. But we'll transfer in from the general fund, and this fund will end up breaking even. So any questions about the garage?
Yeah. What do you say is happening next year?
It's going to be a department of the general fund, because what we do now is already supplemented with general fund dollars, so it makes no sense to have it as a separate fund. It is really technically a department of the county. Okay. Brenna? So our next fund is our storm water fund. Okay. So our storm water fund has received approximately $6.7 million in revenue. We've spent $5.9 million, so we have a net gain as of May 16th of $858,146. Any questions about storm water?
Is most of that net gain from payroll?
The net gain is from fees collected versus how much we've spent. So they're underspending right now. Their expenditures are only at 39%, Mr. Glover, and at this point in time, you know, they need to be around 85%. So they're, they're being conservative where they're spending. That's why they have a net gain.
That's a little conservative, but go ahead.
Right. Okay. All right. So that's the storm water fund. Brenna, Field Pull-Up Fund 5,100. We'll go to the Beaufort Executive Airport. And these are our enterprise funds. All the funds that begin with a five are enterprise funds. They should act as a business, and we should not be supplementing any of these funds with general fund dollars. They should be standalone, self-sufficient. So our Beaufort Executive Airport has received $982,678 in revenue, and they've spent $982,329. So they have a net gain of $349. Any questions about the Beaufort Executive Airport?
Yeah, have the lease agreements that we've done, have they all kicked in?
No.
John Rembold?
No. I just wonder if that's reflected in there, because I know we've approved quite a few lease agreements.
Evening, John. How are you doing?
Good evening. Thank you for the question. Yes, they have kicked in, but I'll tell you, those lease agreements are very, very incremental, so really not going to move the needle too much. Where that comes from is people flying their airplanes and buying fuel, so that's the primary source of our revenue.
Okay.
Thank you.
You might want to hang around in case there's questions about the Hilton Head Island Airport. All right, our next one, our next fund, and our final enterprise fund, is Fund 5,400, which is the Hilton Head Island Airport. And so to date, we've received $4.8 million in revenue and spent $3.5 million. Excuse me. So there is a net gain of $1.2 million in the Hilton Head Island Airport.
And all of those profit, all of those positive statements are not part of what you reported as the overage in the fund balance at this point?
No, sir. It's not.
Those are separate and freestanding, right?
Separate and freestanding, yes, sir. Mm-hmm. They each have their own fund balance. Is that all of them, Brenna? 1040? Okay, yes, 1040, our capital improvement fund. Which for some reason, I don't have in front of me. You'll help me? Okay. I think I can see that forward. So this is our capital improvement fund. Our capital improvement fund, we have received $8.9 million in revenue, and we've spent $12.6 million in expenditures and encumbrances. That does include our outstanding POs right now. So it shows a net loss of $3.7 million. There is another month of collections, no, a month and a half, that needs to be posted to this fund. So hopefully, this fund will... to this fund, so hopefully this fund will either break even or will eat away at some of that fund balance that we have in here. But next year, next year's budget, we have transferred some millage over to cover our capital needs.
These expenditures certainly aren't in line with you when you consider the amount of work that has to be done to the properties that we own.
Absolutely. And that concludes my presentation. Do you all have questions?
Thank you. I don't think so, Denise.
All right.
I know you're not leaving, because there'll be more of you later, right?
That's right.
Okay, thanks very much.
You're welcome.
We're going to now move into citizen comments. I have six people who wish to speak on items that are agenda items. Grant McClure. Grant, hi, Grant. How are you?
Good evening, counsel. My name is Grant McClure. I work for the Coastal Conservation League, and our office is at 1212 King Street, and that's in Beaufort. Thank you for the opportunity to comment on item 15 regarding the plastic bag ordinance updates. We want to thank the council, as well as the Keep Beaufort County Beautiful Board for bringing these changes forward. And as we're looking at this ordinance and looking for an opportunity to strengthen it, there's really two items that we'd like to hone in on, to further bolster the protections and try to keep some of the plastic out of our communities. And so the first is Section 38164, Item K, which creates an exception for carryout cutlery, and that includes things like spoons and forks. And in particular, it seems like earlier in the ordinance, those items are prohibited, however, later on, there seems to be an exception, and so some clarity on if those items are to be allowed or to be banned. Additionally, Section 38164, and that's under the exemptions, Item H, it allows for an exemption for any products purchased outside of Beaufort County, purchased, prepared, or packaged outside of Beaufort County. And so, you know, that's written pretty broadly and could potentially, you know, be abused. And so just wanted to bring those two items to your attention, to say, and say thank you, and also that we're, we understand that the county is wanting to talk to all the municipalities, and we're happy to help engage municipalities so that the entire region can get up to speed with these changes. Thank you.
Thanks, Brad. Next speaker is Charles Houston. Mr. Houston? Come forward, please.
Thank you, Mr. Houston.
Nice to see you again.
Yes, I wanted to speak to the council in reference to item number 14, and that is the proposal to fund the green space program. There appears to be some ambiguity here in this reading. First of all, it doesn't state who is the applicant. You know, is it the town of Hilton Head, or who actually is the applicant? The second thing is, it mentions a new appraisal. All right, there was a recent appraisal, but I'll just speak to now another appraisal. The third point I wanted to bring to council's attention is that the, it says that the final amount will not be known until the staff has performed their due diligence. So if these are prerequisites that have to be performed, is this reading now proper to be considered?
That last part you were referring to, is that in the, is that in the?
It says the final amount is unknown, unless staff completes and reviews necessary due diligence in accordance with the green space, if our committee's recommendation. The other point I wanted to make is that the town of Hilton Head, if they are the applicant, it doesn't specify, has entered a contract through the Master and Equities Court to purchase the property, and they have made the representation that they have their own resources and funds for the acquisition of the property. And my question is, have they relayed this point to county council, that they already have the funds for the purchase? And if so, why come the county council to the green space program for additional funds? These are just questions I bring for your consideration, and you may not have an answer to them right now.
It doesn't surprise me, Mr. Houston, but thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Sam.
Next on the citizens' comments is Cade Yarborough from Defuski Island.
Good evening. I'm Cade Yarborough, Chair of the Defuski Island Council. A lot has happened over the past couple of weeks. The Defuski Island Council has sent a letter endorsing Hague Point's EMS application. Representatives from the Hilton Head RV Resort Community attended our own council meeting and shared some unsettling stories about the tactics used against their community by the Turner family, which is our current ferry operator. Our island's animal welfare group shared a report on inhumane ferry conditions for pets, including exposure to heat, rain, burned paw pads from the metal floor ramp, and dangerous diesel exhaust fumes in one of the holding areas, and extremely high fees, as I exclaimed the last meeting I was here. These are all important issues, but nothing approaches what happened last weekend. On Thursday, we received multiple reports from locals and visitors that the right engine on the Manatee was stopped running, but the, but it could, it was running, but it could not be put into gear. So it was clearly struggling getting down the river. On Friday, the Manatee was still, continued to be used for all the runs throughout the day, and several residents contacted the Coast Guard and the county to report the problem. On the four o'clock run, there was a rainstorm and a thunderstorm as well. You have received emails from these boat riders about their nightmare situation, with some of them wondering if they would survive the trip. You would also hear from Ms. Hope tonight, she was with her family on that boat. The Manatee Two was still used on Friday morning, and we have photos documenting that the right engine was still not working. On the day of, on the day's second run, the Manatee had finally been replaced by a pontoon boat named the Ohana, which is owned by, outside Hilton Head, and as of this morning, the Ohana is still used, being used by Low Country. Among our questions, has this boat been inspected and has it, and has this subcontractor been approved by the county? If not, why? Earlier this year, Mr. Robinson stated that the pontoon boat named the Soul would be Low Country's primary, or second primary boat. If this is true, why wasn't that been, being deployed this weekend when the Manatee lost its engine? In fact, the Soul was actually owned by Island Head, and it was unavailable because of the busy Memorial Day weekend. And what about the two alternative boats that are required by the contract? No one can tell us any names of these boats, or whether or not they've been inspected and approved by the county. You'll be discussing our ferry situation in your executive meeting tonight. We ask the strongest possible terms that you change our ferry providers. The current ferry provider is not meeting the terms of his contract, and especially as it relates to the requirements that he has two primary boats and backup, and backup boats. Clearly, he only has one boat, the Manatee, and it seems very unsuitable. There are many reasons why the Low Country has been a disaster for our community, but not having the required boats is a justification for canceling this contract. Consider our request for the, before actual tragedy takes place on our boat. The ferry provider can be replaced, but lives cannot. These are our constituents, but they're also your constituents as well, and we hope, we just simply ask that you do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Cade. Hope Schaefer here this evening. Hope Schaefer?
She was here.
Hello, Hope, thanks for coming tonight.
Hello, thank you for inviting me. I'm a grandmother who lives on Defuski. I wasn't actually on the Manatee on Friday night, my family was, and this is a letter that I wrote to the council in real time while I was waiting for them to arrive. So Friday night, May 25th, 4:25 p.m. Dear council members, as you are no doubt aware, Defuski Island is facing a ferry crisis. I could list any number of concerns, and you've probably heard them all already, but at the moment, nothing is more concerning to me than a total disregard for our safety. Because at this very moment, my daughter and my two grandchildren are being ferried to the island in the midst of a raging tropical storm. The boat, packed with passengers, crowded onto uncomfortable benches, is running on one engine due to a mishap earlier. It is clearly not up to the task. As the rain lashes outside my windows on the island, my daughter writes me to say, "This is getting scary." She says, "The boat crashed up against the dock as it was leaving and bent a piling before lurching into Calabagi Sound. Now it is heavily listing to one side as it struggles to churn through the waves. Lightning is flashing on all sides, rain is pelleting the boat like a fire hose." She notes that even the usually thoughtful and kind staff looks worried. No safety announcements have been made, although she knows that the life rafts are up on the deck in the open and only reachable through a steep slippery ladder, in other words, useless. I am reading her posts and holding my breath until my little family is back on shore. Perhaps you have children or grandchildren and can relate to my concern, and perhaps you can help me answer this question. When is it ever okay to let, one, the bad judgment of just a few people negatively impact the lives of so many? Okay, P.S., they just arrived safely. So here's a final question for you. How many chances is this council willing to take before there's a real tragedy? Thank you for listening, I really appreciate it, and I hope we have a good outcome.
Thank you, Hope.
Thank you.
Larry Carringer Jr. Evening, Mr. Carringer.
Good evening. I'm speaking on Agenda Number 27. Chairman, Vice Chairman, and Chairs of the Beaufort County, this affidavit is a signed and notarized statement of the damages I have seen caused by the Turner family. Neil Turner, my name is Larry Carringer, and we own Lot 134 and call it home. Neil has continuously harassed and intimidated people in our community. He is rude and has continuously harassed and intimidated the people. Our HOA fees had to remain at a higher level due to the lawsuits, instead of our HOA fees going to improve our resort. We have spent all of it on legal fees. Our resort has gone from a top 35 resort in North America with a A rating with the Better Business Bureau to an F rating with multiple negative reviews. Our Memorial Day weekend on Saturday morning, we had 70 empty sites and only 30 rented. This is happening every weekend due to the Turners resorting back to an old abandoned covenant from 1981. He will not allow modern day travel trailers with slide outs, he will not allow campers over 96 inches wide or 35 feet long. At one time, he did not have a problem with letting them in, but then changed. He is costing our owners, who bought the lots as an investment, to lose hundreds of thousands of dollars in rental revenue. The puzzling, the puzzling thing is, he gets half of the rental revenue as he leases our rental rights. He was supposed to provide marketing, advertisement, hospitality, and other things to get half of the rental. On a three-day weekend, he's costing himself over $15,000 or more in revenue. Imagine how much it is losing and how our owners are losing week in, week out. How can anyone make a rule that creates such losses and be able to survive? He parks the ferry at Hilton Head Harbor every night. There is no sewer pump at our marina. Where is all the sewage going? Who is paying to bring the ferry to this dock? Was that part of the contract? Is he also charging the county to fuel it at his dock? Our small resort cannot handle the ferry if it was moved to Hilton Head Harbor. We do not have the parking, safe entry and exit to Jenkins Road, or the bathroom facilities to support this ferry. It would create a flow of traffic of people in a very small area, the same reason as Katie Turner, Neil Turner's wife, ran the ferry out of their very own neighborhood just for Neil Turner, Low Country Ferry, to receive the contract. That alone should be a huge conflict of interest. Also, why was it not considered, when given the contract, that he was involved in multiple lawsuits against us? I hope this opens the eyes of the council to take a deeper look into this. Hilton Head Harbor and Defuski Island residents are collateral damage in a much bigger plan. Thank you for your time and consideration, and I have quite a few more affidavits here that I will give Ms. Brown at.
Give it to the clerk, it'll be okay.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Carringer. Daniel Gorley from the Beaufort County Sheriff's Office. Evening, Daniel.
Mr. Jimmey. You wanted to give it to the clerk?
I did.
Yeah, I'm going to give it to.
Okay.
Did he miss that?
Well, I'm not too sure, because he took it back with him.
Mr. Carringer, do you want to give that document to the clerk? They'll take it, thank you. Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hello, Daniel.
Hey, good evening, counsel. Counsel, I'm here to speak to you about item number 16 on your agenda, the ordinance regarding a budget, specifically referencing or starting with section number seven, the law enforcement user fee. As y'all know, that is the fee that we assess against Hilton Head Island for the services
Talk a little louder.
Okay. For the services that Beaufort County Sheriff's Office provides. In that provision, there is a new addition from last year's ordinance, specifically that all appropriations for this purpose shall be solely funded from the law enforcement service charge and uniform user fee. Boxing us in to that particular amount, I would just note on item or page number 111 in your agenda packet, the anticipated revenue as of right now is 5.6 million. Beaufort County Sheriff's Office has budgeted or anticipated a budget amount of 6.1 million. So we are approximately $500,000 short for services that are going to be provided and to be covered by the law enforcement user fee. If this language is to remain in the ordinance as written, we're going to come before council, probably into the end of the fourth quarter, ask them for a supplement of a budgetary increase of $500,000, given this shortfall. Now, I know, and I'm sure Miss Christmas will say something, Crystal Bice is doing its audit, that audit has not come in for this year, so that budget amount, or that revenue, anticipated revenue amount may change. But as of right now, as it stands, we're $500,000 short on that. And my concern for the sheriff's office is that we are boxing ourselves in, not allowing us the ability to transfer line item money into this account to cover the services that are being provided by Hilton, to Hilton Head, by the sheriff's office. Moving on to section number 10, the additional amendment from last year's ordinance deals specifically with elected officials. Of course, I'm here to represent the sheriff's office and advocate on their behalf, but as you have written, each elected official is permitted, subject to county council's prior approval, to transfer appropriations between object classification codes within that elected official's budget. All right, we didn't have that before, and quite frankly, if we are required to come before council to do a line item budget transfer within our, within our previously approved budget, it is going to disrupt the sheriff's office's daily functions. There is no question about that, I'm very confident in it. We do line item transfers consistently. Line item transfers may include, for example, this year, we had a canine officer die, we had to purchase a new dog. That was not an anticipated budget request that we came before council last year on, so we did a line item transfer for $8,000. We had the opportunity or the requirements to upgrade our 911 recording system, we did a line item transfer for $4,500. Those are daily items that we do to be able to operate within the sheriff's office. What is equally concerning to me is that council, while limiting county elected officials' authority, is allowing the county administrator to approve line item budgets within its own department without any cap whatsoever. So, as stated in the ordinance, each department is permitted, subject to the county administrator or its designated approval, to transfer appropriations between object classification codes within that department. But yet you're telling county elected officials that they're not allowed to transfer line items. Then we move on, you've capped department-to-department transfers at $50,000. Again, county elected officials, you're taking away their ability to transfer line item, budget items, and it will disrupt the sheriff's office. We are 24/7 operation, we are not a fixed-rate operation, we can't anticipate every single budget item that may occur. We could drive down the road, we could have a shootout, we could have a vehicle blow up, we could have a hurricane come through, knock on wood, if we don't, our overtime expenses could go up. But in order to operate But in order to operate, we need to be able to do our line item transfers. So I would hope and ask that you reconsider the provision and the ordinance. We're certainly happy to meet with any council members that have any additional questions, expound on the issues, and discuss it at the appropriate time. Thank you.
Thank you, Daniel. Is there anybody else in the audience who wishes to speak on any agenda items? Seeing none, I will close the citizen comments, move on to Item Number 9, which is Liaison and Committee Reports. Are there any Liaison and Committee Reports?
I have some.
Ms. Howard?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, I went to the Beaufort Memorial Hospital Board meeting on May 22. They are seeing a high recruitment of nurses from Canada, which is helping in their, they're getting their numbers down for contract nurses, which is saving a lot of money. They got a new MRI in their hospital, which is helping to keep the main campus open 12 hours, and they're seeing a lot less of callbacks for MRI operators because of these extended hours for the MRI machine for 12 hours at a time. They also have seen their transportation services for people who don't have anyone to transport them home after surgery or other reasons. And now, they're serving 26 ZIP codes surrounding Beaufort Memorial Hospital area. And they've seen their numbers go up, volume continues to grow. On May 22, I also got the fun job of going to a dedication of a Habitat for Humanity House in my district, which was wonderful to see that happen. And David Bartholomew and I attended an event at Riverview Charter. There was a lot of activity there and a lot of, they had an exhibit about government and county government. I think David, I didn't see you at the same time, but we were both there, so.
Alice, I was there as well. That was a great event.
Yeah.
It was great to see the kids involved.
Yeah.
Very nice event. Did a big thing on county council. He acted like us for a little while. It was pretty good.
Yeah.
It was a lot to be seen, I'll tell you. It was good.
It was.
Thank you, Alice.
Yes, sir.
Anyone else?
So, I'd like to give a school district report, because they're going to be here for their budget. So, they did issue a $4,307,000 for the design and construction work for Hilton Head Island High School. That is funded by the '23 referendum. The Finance Committee noted that, for the first time in over 20 years, a tax anticipation note was not issued for Quarter 3 because the district's fund balance was sufficient to cover all the expenses until state revenue arrived. And that's over the last 20 years. The general fund expenditures for third quarter was at 70.8% of the budget. Last year, it was 76.8%, so they're under that. The district paid off a revenue bond in February, which saved taxpayers over $830,000. Capital projects funded by the 2019 referendum are 99.3% encumbered or complete. There is still a conversation on cell phones. The superintendent proposed a draft to the board members. This is a very complex issue, as I said last time, and he noted that the South Carolina General Assembly currently has two bills on the floor. One says a ban during the school day, the other one, only during instructional time. The General Assembly is talking about it in June. I saw Senator Davis yesterday at our ceremony in Sun City, and he, we discussed this a bit. So the superintendent's recommending they wait until General Assembly decides, so they're not in conflict. And finally, the school board approved and certified the budget, which they have presented to us, $359,170,000, and the debt service fund budget of $108 million.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Seeing no one else, we will move on to Item Number 10, which is Approval of the Consent Agenda. May I have a motion, please?
I'll make that motion. I'll second.
Thank you. The consent agenda has items from Community Services and Public Safety, the Finance Committee, and the Public Facilities Committee. Is there any further discussion with regard to this? Seeing no discussion, we'll pass this without objection. Are there any objections? Seeing none, this matter passes. Moving on to Number 11, is a public hearing and a third reading of an ordinance authorizing the interim county administrator to execute the necessary documents to purchase and to fund the purchase of the real property known as Project Bravo. Does anyone wish to make any comments during the public hearing session? Seeing none, Mr. Robinson?
Sir, a quick comment about Project Bravo. Staff recommends that you deny this request. As the property was purchased cash by another vendor, so it's no longer available.
Well, that's a very good reason.
That's very bad news.
Okay. Tom, do we have to take an action on this?
Motion to deny.
Well, yeah, true. Yes. So you're in a public hearing and a second reading, so.
It's actually third reading.
Third reading, so you've settled for a motion of second.
Well, we could all vote no, yes? And that would be the end of it?
Correct.
Okay, okay. So we understand that if we vote no, this goes away. I don't need a roll call. Is anybody voting yes on this matter? No? Everybody's voting no? Okay, thank you. So this matter fails, and that would be the end of it?
You got a motion and a second?
Yeah, I got that. Okay, thank you.
You did?
Sorry?
No, you didn't.
We didn't do it.
Oh, I didn't get that? I'm sorry.
Some move, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, okay. It's David Bartholomew and Logan Cunningham. Sorry, I thought I had that.
You didn't get a motion, that's all.
Item Number 12, public hearing and second reading.
Can I just ask the administration a question on this?
Sorry?
Could I just ask the administration a question on --
Sure, yeah, of course.
Concerning, I mean, Project Bravo. Where do we go next?
We have a plan with partners for a few different facilities. One partner is with our municipality, a local municipality. We're still going to house the de-hec administration and records management.
Okay.
It's going to be a struggle, but we're going to get it done.
Okay, thank you.
All righty.
Item Number 12 is a public hearing and a second reading of an ordinance authorizing the interim county administrator to execute documents and provide funding for the purchase of a portion of real property abutting at Hilton Head Island Airport, located on Summer Drive, TMS number R51005000271A0000. Anyone here wish to speak on that matter? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. May I have a motion, please?
Some moves.
Thank you. Have a second?
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, we can pass this without objection. Does anyone object? Seeing no objection, this matter passes. Thank you very much. Item 13 is a public hearing and second reading of an ordinance authorizing the conveyance of multiple parcels of real property from Beaufort County to the South Carolina Department of Transportation in connection with South Carolina 802 Sam's Point Road Right Turn Lane.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second. Either one.
I don't care.
Sorry, I had a note when I wasn't listening. I'm sorry.
I said I'd make the motion.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay. Before we take that, I'm just going to hold that off. I'm going to ask for a public hearing. Is there anybody here who wishes to speak on that matter? Seeing no one, I'll accept that motion and second. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, this matter will pass. Without objection, are there any objections? Seeing none, this matter passes. Number 14 is a public hearing and approval of a resolution authorizing the interim county administrator to execute documents necessary and to provide funds to contribute to the procurement by the applicant of fee simple real property located on Hilton Head Island, known as the Mitchellville Track. Not to exceed the final value as determined by a new appraisal after the completion of an updated plat, resolution of all legal issues, claims contingent upon full legal description, and shall require that any funds received from grants, private, federal, or state funding be used solely to reimburse the expenditure of the green space program. Before I engage in any discussion, I would like to invite Mr. McShane. Is he here this evening?
He is.
Would you come forward, Mr. McShane? Whatever you have to say will help us with our discussion. So if you wouldn't mind, thank you very much.
Good evening, Council. Mr. Chairman, thank you. I am Mike McShane. Just for the record, I'm a resident of Charleston County, but served your pleasure as your chairman of your Green Space Committee. Forgive me, I was tardy this, but I've been at Joint Bond Review in Columbia today. I made sure the state borders hadn't changed.
Oh.
And I did get approval on Gregory Neck. So the state is moving forward in that. Your Green Space Committee recommendation that went through the Community Services Committee, I got it right this time.
Yes, sir.
Is to update an appraisal. An appraisal was done on this property last October to give us some sense. And we requested one of our partners to initiate that appraisal. But now that we were at six, over six months, we felt it was prudent that we have that appraisal updated. That has been requested to go through, and like many of you are familiar, appraisals, real estate transactions are not something that is going to happen overnight, but we'll stay on them. They understand the importance of this. And so a recommendation is to ask council to approve to the value not to exceed the new appraisal on the acquisition for the 25-plus-or-so acres on Hilton Head called, formerly known as Mitchellville.
Okay.
There were a couple of questions, Mr. Chairman, that I believe the gentlemen in the audience.
Yeah, sorry, Mr. Houston isn't here.
I see that.
You could have answered those four.
And what I would offer is, the town of Hilton Head is the applicant. Due to Judge Duke's timeframe in his order, they agreed to move forward and provide the funding that the grant will be a reimbursement to the town of Hilton Head. And then, as you stated, any grants that we can, as the county can be recipient at the state level or the federal level, that that would go back, come back to the county for the green space program. So the grant would, in essence, be a reimbursement to the town of Hilton Head for bridging the financing on this, and that was to meet a timeframe that was set by Judge Duke's.
And those grants from the state and federal may take some time to come back to the county.
Typically, they can get anywhere from six months to 18 months. But I made a commitment to the Community Services Committee to pursue several. And there are several that we can go after that could result in prospectively somewhere between a million and several million dollars that I'd like to try to get back.
Okay. Don't leave the podium. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. McShane on this particular item?
I do.
Yes, Tab?
Just to reiterate, will we be asking Hilton Head to participate financially in this venture? Not just put the money up front, but.
There'll be an ongoing negotiation with the town of Hilton Head as an applicant going forward on that. That's why I would offer to council that the reason that the grants would come fully back to green space is to be the match on this particular project. They have other applications in, which I think they'll be learning, that we'd like to see them participate. It makes it a stronger application. We're obligated to review that application, and we will do so at our upcoming meeting on Monday. Does not obligate us to follow through on what their request is. But in this case, I will defend that this is an iconic enough of a piece of property to move forward. Bring the recommendation to you.
Mr. Reed?
I just want to say thank you for being aggressive to go after that property. If you look at county council and town council working together, who came together to put that into green space with consideration, when does Judge Duke's due to make his decision?
So this is my understanding, and I'm going to turn to wonderful staff here to confirm. We were, the town was the high bid, and then the minority interest had a 10-day period to make a decision, to then initiate a 60-day period of making a counteroffer.
Yes, sir.
All right. My understanding is that they did make the, they pulled the trigger on the 10 days, so now we've got, what, 50-something days before we can do anything. But meanwhile, we're waiting on this appraisal, which needs to be done anyway.
The appraisal, waiting on that's not going to hurt our efforts to secure that?
Even if we had that today, we still got to wait through that period of time because of the ruling that allowed the minority owner to trigger this mechanism that gave them that 60-day period.
Hypothetically speaking, if this minority interest places a little bit more money there, does that take Hilton Head out of the running for that?
It puts it, I think it's fair to say it puts some risk at that. But at this point, I think we just have to wait and see.
Is there going to be a period to reoffer, or is it going to be?
Do you have a comment on that?
I'll be happy to. Thank you, Mr. McShane.
Good afternoon. So the bids, there were three bids within the closing date. The minority group put in a bid at 11.2 million. Hilton Head put in 11.75 million with an escalator to 12 million. Hilton Head won that portion of the process. As part of the consent order, the minority group had 10 days to say whether they wanted the opportunity to counter that. They don't have to go higher, they just have to get to where Hilton Head was, according to the consent order. They have 60 days to do their due diligence, come up with that, show proof that they have it, and then I believe they have 15 days to close after that. If they don't, that portion closes, and we will stand ready with your approval tonight to go to close up to that 11.75 or the appraised value, whichever is lower. There are a lot of moving parts. It's all moving concurrently, and what we're doing is we're running against the clock with these consent orders. So with this, we continue to move forward with our due diligence. We will have everything ready to go. If the minority interest gets the money and closes, that's it. We're done. If they don't, we're next in line, and we will be ready. Hilton Head will move to closing, and then this will be a grant reimbursing them up to the said amount. I hope that makes sense.
It does. The only last question I have is, you talked about an escalation that the town of Hilton Head had from 11.7 to 12. Will that take place if there is an offer?
Since there were no other bids higher than 11.75.
That's it.
I think that's it. I don't think that, I don't see a reason for them to escalate it, because the bids were made, and the consent order said that they have an opportunity to come up and match.
My experience, sir, is the escalation clause, which is not an atypical venture in a real estate transaction, expired at the fact that when it was designated, we were the high, the town of Hilton Head was the high bid.
Yes, sir. And you know would be very disappointing to this group here, as well as.
It'd be incredibly disappointing if it doesn't go into the public trust.
Please.
And I think the majority of that family has said they want to see that done. But we've got to, we're at, Judge Duke's set these terms, and we're doing our best to be in a position to be ready.
Take care of business.
Yes, sir.
Well, listen, thank you.
Yeah. I know Tom just said that, but I kind of disagree, so I guess it's not everybody up here. I have a problem with Hilton Head being the applicant when they have the funds to do it. So unless I'm misunderstanding, we're saying that we could be getting some grant money back. We have no clue how much it is, nor do we know how much the property is. So we could be, end up being, paying seven to eight million out of green space for 25 acres. Theoretically, that's not out of the question, even if we got three to four million back. So my question is, why are we not having Hilton Head partner with us to do 50/50? I mean, they are the applicant. If they're the ones that went forward ahead of time before they applied for the green space referendum, I'm sure that they have the funds in there to buy it themselves. I understand that, I have no problem partnering, but for us to carry the load outside of grants that we're going to go apply for ourselves, we really don't even need their help to begin with, and if that was the case. So if Hilton Head is trying to take the lead on this, I don't understand why they're not putting any skin in the game, other than just fronting money for a time that they want to be reimbursed. So I'll be honest with, not knowing how much money we're spending out of green space, I mean, your last few projects nailed it. Jasper County helped on it. We had, I believe, the Department of Defense helped on one of them, and people are putting skin in the game. And one of the things I said before, especially like in our transportation referendum, was, I'm tired of Beaufort County being the one taking the burden of all the roads, and Jasper County just continuing to build. It's the same concept. Hilton Head has the funds to do it, they can help out. So I'm not sure what the motion's going to be here today, but without knowing how much, and them not being willing to actually put skin in the game that's not getting reimbursed to them, I can't support it.
I understand, Mr. Cunningham. If I may address it, Mr. Chairman. I offer this for thought. Hilton Head has put themselves a little bit of risk, because we've said we will not exceed the appraised value. The appraised value was X six-plus months ago. That doesn't necessarily mean it'll be that same value today. And we will go after the grants that I recommend to the Green Space Committee and to your staff, that I think we can be successful in getting. They will not share in that. And you will have ownership of that property, as I understand. This is not necessarily to be, and that may be a negotiation counsel to counsel has to still complete. But I think my understanding is.
That's what it stands now. That's right.
And we have ownership, not an easement on it.
That's right.
To your overall umbrella point about an entity making an application needs to have skin in the game. I truly believe that. I think you've heard me say that from even before this application came, came in. And we will work to do that. They have a, they can defend, they'll defend their position by this idea that they, they generate the tax revenue base that they think that they do that. I, they're really clear on my point on that. And I think it is, will be through negotiations that we'll see that come. I don't think we'll disappoint you in the end. What I'm asking for tonight is to give approval so that we don't lose the opportunity that when this time period is that the county has successfully attracted what may be one of the last tracts like this on the island.
Can I ask you, how many houses is it zone for currently?
I'll have to defer, defer to maybe, do you mind if I defer to some of your staff?
Oh, that's probably fine. I'm just caring what we're spending per house.
Just a ballpark?
Yeah, I mean, the zoning on the parcel is Hilton Head zoning because it's in the town of Hilton Head. And it is split two ways. There's a higher intense zoning up on the water and the kind of less intense as you get, kind of get back towards Mitchellville. But overall, if you put the two together, it can have some pretty intense development. There are some limitations, but it can develop pretty intensely.
Can I just say?
Is it residential, though?
Tom, just a minute.
It could be, yes. There could be residential units.
But the town of Hilton Head would have to approve that, the same town that's filing for us to buy it?
All development would have to go through their development review.
Tom, another question, last one.
Well, last one. Well, think about this. We have the ability to protect property that, if you go down, take Mr. McShane down to the right out of Fish Hall Road there, there's a development. You can, actually, I took five council members there. There's a lot of homes that are, that go right up to the ocean there, and what we're trying to avoid to protect and preserve, if that's how we feel. And I value and I believe what Mr. McShane can do. He can not only get this appraised value at a certain level, which will be approved, but these grants, I believe he's going to do very well with those. So it's going to be a win-win, no matter what we do. Protect property in, you know, the last, I don't know of any other property there like that.
Thanks, Tom. Any further questions for Mr. McShane?
I actually just have one. I'm sorry, I'm going to make it quick. My biggest concern right here is the Ayers property. I understand the consent order in place. I haven't read the full pleadings here. Are there any other property owners that have been identified? Has a guardian ad litem been appointed for parties unknown?
Yes.
Where are we in that process?
That's a great question. So Judge Duke's ruled on that with all of the property owners back in 2020, I think it was, 2019, 2020. There was litigation coming out of that. Some of that is under appeal, but this consent order clears all of that up. So the verbiage in this consent order, when it sells, all of that is gone. Everything is cleared up, and that's part of what both parties agreed to.
Okay, gotcha.
Yes, sir.
Yes, so this is a historic property on Hilton Head, beachfront property over by Beach Cities, 26 acres that is almost adjacent to Mitchellville and has a strong connection to Mitchellville with the great history. So this is a real important project for green space. And I think the way you're handling it, Mr. McShane, is exemplary. And I'm sure that if the minority group of owners doesn't prevail, that we will move forward. We will gain ownership, and then through your skill, we'll get some reimbursement from whatever government will give it to us. And we'll still have tens of millions of dollars available through this sales tax program to continue our efforts to preserve property throughout the county and in adjacent counties as well, which we've done with the first purchase you participated in.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, add one comment. Mr. Cunningham's point is not lost on the Green Space Committee.
Right.
I ask for some faith, how we're going to facilitate so that we're not back in front of, where you're, in essence, the only player paying for that. Very fair point.
Yes.
Very fair point.
Okay, before I, Tom?
Actually, bring it back to one very valid point. It's not the county. It's the people that pay the taxes that pay for this.
Yeah, it's out of the sales tax referendum. That's absolutely correct.
The people that pay for this.
Yeah, that's right. That's okay. It's just a matter of having partners in this. We should have a stake in the venture, a dog in the fight. If they're asking us to buy something, they should be participating more fully, is the feeling I think that people have here. And that's, and I'll end it there.
Done.
Okay. Thank you very much.
May I tell you one quick illustration where this is a parallel, Mr. Chairman? I'll be really quick on that.
Okay.
Nearly 20 years ago, when I first was chairman of DNR, the very first real estate transaction I was presented was to buy a 10,000-acre tract in Berkeley County for what was then an extraordinary amount of money, $47 million, known as Bono Ferry. My fear was that we were going to set a new precedent of what the comparables would be, and that other large landowners in and around the surrounding area, including some of the industrial paper ownership then, would see that as an opportunity to sell and capitalize on that new value. It actually did the opposite. It created a synergy of conservation and gave certainty to all the landowners in and around that now Bono Ferry Wildlife Management Area is one of the most popular wildlife management areas in the Charleston Tri-County area. No one remembers, until I tell them, it was $47 million. What they do remember, it was, it has permanently been protected and part of the public trust forever. That does not dismiss the value that we work toward. But what it does say is, this is, in my view, such an iconic piece like that that despite sometimes scarring the inside of my mouth when I talk to the town of Hilton Head, this will absolutely be something that this council will take pride in forever.
Thank you.
You did it.
Let's speak.
Nobody else is going to step up and do it. And this will be something 50 years, 100 years from now will always be the case. That's why sometimes it may be distasteful, but why we do some things like this. And don't forget, I got to come back in front of you with other projects that the town of Hilton Head may be looking at.
I need approval on a bridge. That's what I need.
It's distasteful, but it's necessary.
We can, I understand, Mr. Cunningham.
Thanks for that.
And we can play a role in helping that.
Thanks for that, Mr. McShane.
Before we have any, before, before. Public hearing?
Yeah, I'm going to do that right now. Before we have any further discussion, I'd like to see if there's anybody else in the audience that would like to comment on this as part of the public hearing. Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. Thank you, Mr. McShane. We're ready to take a vote. I'd like to see, I'd like to see if we can pass this without objection. Are there any objections?
Any motion?
I do that again?
Yes, we didn't do it.
I'll motion it, Mr. Vice Chair.
Would someone remind me sooner, please?
Yes.
Thank you. Have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We take a vote without objection. Hearing no objections. This matter passes unanimously. Thank you all very much. That was very important. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Number 15 is the first reading of an ordinance amending chapter 38, Environment, Article 6, Single Use Plastic Bags, Section 38, 161, Purpose, Section 38, 162, Definitions, Section 38, 163, Regulations, and 38, 164, Exemptions of the Beaufort County Code of Ordinances. We're going to get some assistance from Mr. Holbert on this, yes? Thank you very much, Brian.
Yeah, you want to get a motion?
Thank you. I'll have a motion on that, please.
I'll second it. I'll make a motion.
Thank you. And then we'll have some help and some discussion.
Did you get the slides, Brian?
Thank you for the help.
As I mentioned at the committee meeting, in 2018, county council passed an ordinance where we banned single-use plastic bags. Now, this is the next step in evolution in which Beaufort County, Keep Beaufort County Beautiful Board is recommending that county council adopt an ordinance to take it a step further to ban all plastic bags for carryout, plastic straws, and polystyrene plastic foam products. In a nutshell, that's what the ordinance will be for. Mr. McKellen asked that I give you an executive summary and narrow it down. And those are the three key things, but there's one additional step they want to request. And that is that all Beaufort County facilities shall use recyclable or compostable products for disposable food service ware as part of the ordinance as well. That sounds good on its face, but you have to think about that. What kind of county facilities do we have? We've got this facility. We've got recreation facilities. You've got a building we're going to house state entities that we're required to house. And then you've got residences where we have people living in there that the county manages through Audra, where they live there as well. So we have to be careful about that language as far as what's the intent of that language. So that's an additional request there as well. So in a nutshell, that's what you're considering. Your next step, there's been some discussion as far as what should be the next steps. We clearly need to make it uniform throughout the county. We shouldn't have it just in the rural county, and municipalities don't have the same ban on those plastic products. So we need input from the municipalities, and we, their buy-in before we pass that ordinance would be my recommendation. But you also need input from the local businesses, retail, the grocery stores, the bars, the restaurants, the fast-foods places, the gas stations that sell drinks and food. All those places should have a say in this. So I would encourage you to seek that input. The question is, what do you do first? Go to the municipalities and get their support? Or hear from the local businesses to see what their input is before we send it to the local municipalities so they know what we're considering from there? My recommendation would be, before we go to the municipalities, we hear from the local businesses what they'll accept or what it's up to your prerogative.
Alice, will we be able to move this to Community Services for the further steps on input?
We can. The only thing about, I don't disagree with Mr. Holbert about local businesses, but the plastic lobby will lobby against us as they did before. And we just have to, when we say local businesses, we need to mean local, not national, not national businesses. But we can, we can work with the Make Keep Beaufort Committee and also with Coastal Conservation League to get some input.
And you could also put together the sequence of events for this input from the three different categories so that the community can do that. This, we can have a first reading here tonight, but all these other matters have to be cleared up before we get to second and third reading. So it may be a necessity after this reading to get this started, to postpone some of those readings while we do all the other work with the, with the vendors and the municipalities and anyone else who has an interest in this that we want to hear from, so. Okay. Any questions for Mr. Holbert?
I do have a question. Look, if you don't want me going on.
I have to go.
Have you all looked into the Commerce Clause, how it would affect it, or especially the dormant Commerce Clause? Is this even legal for us to do? Is it going to interrupt so many contracts that it's going to, you know, affect interstate commerce?
Well, it does affect interstate commerce, there's no doubt. But we would not be the first community to put this law into effect. And it's just within the county, and it's just banning plastics. So you have to weigh, what is the impact on the community? And if you hear from the committee and from the Coastal Conservation League and our coastal communities, plastic is a real burden. It's a problem for the wildlife, for the beaches, the sides of our road, the trash, the litter that's out there, and our landfills. So there is a valid public purpose for us to pass this. And I don't think that the impact on the interstate commerce is enough that would overcome that. I don't think we have that significant of an effect on the interstate commerce. We're not banning commerce. We're just telling them what kind of products are acceptable within our community.
And I'm sorry I wasn't at the, at that committee meeting when all this came up, and I sincerely apologize. But was there talk of what would replace it? Would it be paper products, paper straws?
Biodegradable products is what would be.
Now, what about the health concerns with the paper products that contain PFAS? About 90% of them have been found to contain.
I didn't hear your question.
They contain PFAS. About 90% of the paper products, especially paper straws, were found to contain PFAS. Is that something that's been considered?
I can't speak to that, sir. But I can tell you that paper straws is not the only alternative. There are steel straws, things of that nature, other materials that could be used. And there would be exceptions for medical necessity, for the straws used for like hospitals, doctors' offices, stuff like that, those sort of things. Those would be an exemption.
And one last thing, I did notice it does seem to be some ambiguity in the exceptions section. Some things, it seems like it's banned in one section, then allowing it in another. I don't know. If we're going to do it, we need to have clean language on that.
Yeah, certain categories, and this is what came up from the committee. And I didn't want to muck it with the language or anything, so this is what came forth. But we could clean that up, depending on what the intent and the pleasure of council and the municipalities is.
And one last thing, I'm sorry.
Keep saying it's one last thing.
I'm sorry, it keeps coming to mind. Rather than banning something, had, were any alternatives presented as far as incentivizing the behavior to get businesses to change their model rather than just forcing it down their throat?
I think that was part of the initial ordinance in 2018, where they were encouraged to have those recyclables, where you could have multi-use bags, linen bags, things of that nature. But you've seen the effect from 2018 till today. You've still got all the plastic bags along the beach, on the sides of the road. It's a problem. You've got the straws that are a problem in different areas. I mean, people just, I mean, litter's a problem. That's all there is to it.
Logan, Logan's going in, you tab.
Do you want to go first?
No, you go.
Yeah, my biggest concern is shoving it down businesses' throats. The fiscal impact on a business for those type of products is leap and bounds. That is a fact. You can go research. Metal straws would be even worse than that. I'm not debating with you. I'm just speaking out loud. I know we're making eye contact, but that is, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Your recycled bags alone that have already been pushed, one are thicker than the original bags we had, and they're almost three times the cost that have been put on the businesses. So we sit here and say that we want to continue to support our businesses. And I hate to tell you, I know people say, not to debate with you, Ms. Howard, but you say that global chains aren't local businesses. They are, because locals work there. They're still managed by locals. A lot of them are franchised by locals, and our people still work there. So that is still a local business. Walmart is an anchor business. That is a local business and stimulates its economy.
I think any business in the county is a local business.
So where that line is, I mean, I'm just saying how we need to take a look. You say you want to support growth on north of the Broad to create more tax revenue, or whatever it might be. All you're doing is putting more constraints on local businesses to not expand in this county, and they're one of the biggest taxpayers we have, between the revenue that they put in the pockets of people here that continue to grow our economy here, as well as us who spend money on them, who these businesses are just going to raise their price to offset it, which we're already fighting in Beaufort County, cost of goods.
Alice, do you have a rebuttal?
I do, but it might be long. Because I was around when we did the first one, and I heard some of these same arguments. But we, we already have, you know, Walmart got around the technicality of it. But Chick-fil-A in, in parts of Charleston are already complying with it. Isle of Palms is already complying with it. Grocery stores are already complying with it. So, you know, we'll, we'll educate, and we'll give you some more information, so. I was not speaking about Walmart.
I can tell you firsthand on the information, though.
I was not talking about Walmart. I was talking about the plastic industry lobbied against it the first time. I wasn't talking about Walmart.
Okay. Tab?
So I had originally submitted my issues to Brian, but I'm going to just reiterate here. On page 49 of the original packet, it said, "Businesses are encouraged, blah, 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 and we do not impose a tax if they don't comply." So when you get to enforcement, who's going to do enforcement? Because any rule without enforcement's a waste of time.
Code enforcement?
Well, it says, "No tax." And then the other thing I had was, and Brian already talked about, it's on all county properties. So again, is that any event on a county property? You know, we have ATAX-funded events, Gullah festivals on county property. Are they all going to have to comply?
Every single school?
Every school, so. And the other issue I had was, and I agree, the municipalities, and we have to find out all that. But the last thing was, takes effect eight months after the date council enacts or, and there were some provisions for municipalities. There's a lot of issues here that have to be resolved. I mean, we just can't.
And that's why we're going to have meetings, and that's why we're going to get input. And I'd welcome, did you copy me on your comments? I don't think you did, if you will.
Yeah, I think I did.
And Logan, if you can copy me, too.
Okay. All of this is going to go, be referred, I'm going to get to you. All of this is going to be referred back to the committee, and all of these objections and all these comments and observations can certainly be mined in that committee section rather than here. That's okay with everybody.
That'd be great. I mean, we're, we're putting it on hold until we get some of these things.
Well, we're not putting it on hold. We're going to move through this and see what we do with it. But until we get answers to all these questions, and even consider Mr. McClure's statements about contradictions that are inherent in the, in the ordinance as it currently exists. I mean, we have to explore that. He's pointed it out to us twice now. And then we'll get to second and third readings. So Mark, you have a question for Brian?
No, I just want to make a comment, and there's a fact that I think this is starting to push into a reach that is costing, will cost our, our local businesses money. When I clean up two miles of Bluffton Parkway on a monthly basis, I don't think I've ever found a straw by itself on the ground. But, you know, this should be consumer-driven. This should not be politically driven. This should be something that people that choose to purchase stuff will go to a, someone that offers those and something that, or it's an option that they have that they want to choose. So again, I think for us to continually push, or as we here shove things down people's throats.
throats, this should be something that as a consumer that you should, if it's important to you, something you should be demanding from your, your own restaurant, your own grocery store, your own supplier, as opposed to us sitting here and demanding it that our businesses pay for.
And like I said, I think we can incentivize that behavior.
Well, it's a good comment, but a lot of times they're going to take the cheapest way they can go and they're not going to listen to the complaints of people individually. They're going to wait for the government to impose some kind of a restriction.
I, I agree with the comment you just made, Mr. Chairman. I would also say that there are other counties and municipalities that have, that have this enforced right now. And I think the committee would be wise enough to look and see what they're doing.
Yep.
And so that we can move forward, so.
Thank you. And I'm going to predict that after we have this first reading, if it passes, that the, the distance between first, second and third are going to be monumental because of so many things that have to happen. We're referring it back to the committee, talking about all these different objections people have here, then talking to the businesses and the municipalities to get them in line. I don't expect this is really going to take place till the end of the year as the way it, it appears to me. There's going to be some delays here moving this forward. And it has to be simply because there's so many people that need to be consulted on it. But I think it's a good start to start talking about it because listen, it's a necessary thing for us to do if we're going to survive this planet. I mean, we have to do this. We must, we must consider doing this and do the best we can with it, so.
Well, we can also improve our enforcement, not just on the litter aspect.
That's right.
There are establishments within the county, within municipalities and the rural county that still don't comply with the .4 milliliter plastic bag. They have the real thin plastic bags and that's just an enforcement issue.
Yeah, you're right. There's a lot of things going on all the time and this is just another one on the list that we're going to have to start paying attention to and move it through the system so you can do the best we can.
Can't we just send it to the committee and not do a first reading?
I would rather do a first reading and send it to the committee and get it on the books and move through it. Yeah, we could kick it down the road, but we have it here in front of us and we can, well, you can vote no.
Yeah.
Okay, so we have, thankfully, we have a motion and a second. Thank you, Brian. We have a motion and a second, so is there any further discussion?
I'd like to say something. I'm on the keep beautiful, keep Beaufort County beautiful along with Alice here. And it was my understanding that we wanted to put this in the ordinance because the small businesses like the restaurants, when you take, take out, they put everything in a cardboard box or they put it in a paper bag. The people who are not complying are people like Walmart. Is that my, is that my?
We've been told.
And that's what we, I wanted to change. And now it's gotten to, you know, spoons and forks and whatever else. So I'd like to take, send this back to the committee.
Well, it's going to go to the committee and all the comments you've made can be delivered there for their consideration.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Dawson's online.
Mr. Dawson.
Mr. Dawson, yes, sir. Mr. Dawson, you're on mute, I think. We can't hear you. Mr. Dawson, can you hear me?
I think we're turned down because of that.
There he is.
That's why, Larry.
Okay.
Hang on.
Because of the speaker.
Mr. Dawson, you should be able to speak now.
Yeah, Mr. Dawson, I'm afraid that we're having, I think, I see, okay, I think we're having a technical problem. Give it another try.
He's voting out.
He's voting it down.
Okay, yeah, we haven't started that yet, but I take your no vote. Okay, can I call this question, please? We have a motion and a second, I'm going to end the discussion. I'd like to pass this without objection. Does anybody object to this moving forward?
I asked for a roll call, Mr. Chairman.
I don't need a roll call, I'll just take your names.
Okay, I believe there's five.
It's okay. One, two, so it's.
I'll vote no as well.
That's six.
I'm taking a roll call. Go ahead, Brian, call a roll, please.
Does this mean it doesn't even go back to committee?
Councilmember Howard.
Going back to, we're going to, we're going to move it to the committee anyway, Alice.
Well, you're going to have to make a motion for that too after this.
Yeah, okay.
Councilmember Howard.
I mean, you can't just, okay, I get that.
Oh, yes. Councilmember Brown? Councilmember Bartholomew?
No.
Councilmember Cunningham?
No.
Councilmember Dawson?
He voted no.
Councilmember Glover?
Yes.
Councilmember Lawson?
Mark Lawson, no.
Councilmember Reitz?
No.
Councilmember Tabernick?
No.
Chairman Passamit?
He said yes.
And Vice Chair McGellin?
Yes. Okay, the motion fails, but it doesn't stop a referral back to the committee for further work on this topic till we can reach an agreement on how we should.
Mr. Chairman, I believe it does actually.
It has to come from a motion and a second on that.
Back to go to committee. If the vote's been taken, it is dead on the table.
Does it?
I think it's dead. I think it's dead.
Which doesn't stop the committee from bringing it up again.
Brian thinks that the ordinance simply didn't pass, so it doesn't go back to the committee. If the committee wants to take it up, they can.
The committee can start an inquiry on its own.
If the committee wants to take it up, well, I guess they, they could bring it back if they want.
Chuck, you're going to rescue me here?
If you want.
So what we can do, I will agree that once it's failed, it cannot be remanded back. But what we can do, staff has heard all of the comments, we understand where we are, we understand what the concerns are. We can take this back, we can refine it, we can create a different product and then we can bring it forward at a later date for reconsideration if that, if that pleases.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to request all of those who voted no to give us some specifics in writing so that when it does come back to community services, after you consider the ordinance again, read it carefully and send us some written comments, so.
List their objections so you can deal with them. Is that what you're saying? Okay, I don't think that's unreasonable.
And we'll be happy to help with that.
I can't order people to do that, I don't think, but I think they would all be happy to do so.
Sure.
What else are they going to do with all the time on their hands?
Especially in Bluffton.
Okay, thank you, Brian, appreciate your help on that. And thank you for the advice on how to get it back to committee and we'll get it there. Item 16 is first reading of an ordinance to make appropriations for county government and special purpose districts for Beaufort County for the fiscal year beginning July 1/24, which is fiscal year '25, and ending June 30/25, to levy taxes for the payment thereof to adopt service and user fees to provide for the expenditure of said taxes and other revenues coming into the county and other matters related thereto. So this is the approval we are seeking for the new budget that will be starting July 1. Denise, will you be coming forward with a presentation? Thank you, Denise.
Good evening, council. So we presented you guys with the budgets last week during finance committee meeting and we gave you all the opportunity to ask questions pertaining to the, to any. Tom, do you want to say something?
Sorry, I was interrupted when you introduced this. Did you get a motion?
No, not yet.
All right.
Do I need it now?
Well, typically, yes, we get a motion in a second.
Then we have discussion. I have a motion and a second.
Thank you, sir.
You'll get it, Larry.
Thank you, Tom.
They're protecting me over here.
So some of you had questions over the weekend. Valerie and I and Mr. Robinson handled several of your questions and concerns with certain line items in the budget. So if there are any specific line items that you would like to address right now as far as changes go, increases or decreases, now is the time to make these changes. One big change that Valerie and I discovered was that one of our funds did not complete entering their entire budget. The insurance part of it was left out. So we had to change the general fund budget. We had to supplement the separate, the special revenue funds budget by about two and a half, 2.5 or 2.6 million dollars. Two million, 678,062. And we balanced the general fund budget with fund balance. Like I said earlier in the year-to-date budget presentation, we do have enough fund balance to cover that, that 2.6 million dollars that was left out. So now's the time to make adjustments to any of the line items that you all wish changing. I think island recreation was one of them.
Yeah, there were two, there were two items that were discussed. I know one was the Island Rec Center, which was a deficit of 42,000.
750, I think.
They gave 7,500, so 42,500.
42,500.
And I think there was a request that you had for the solicitor's office and I think that was also for $50,000. And I just want to get a little more specific on what the purpose of that was, what was that for? Because I know what the Island Rec one was for. Were you the one, David?
Yeah, yeah, I'd been in communication with the solicitor and, and actually I'd been talking to Tab as well. I think we can accommodate a 5% increase, which would match what the other outside agencies received as well. Am I correct in that?
Yeah, but you're going to talk specifically.
Yeah, specifically, they sent me some more information and I forwarded it off. I'll have to pull the, pull the email up. But essentially, they've had a, a flat budget for the last five years from the county, I believe, don't quote me on this. Just the operations alone for salary is 1.9 million dollars here inside Beaufort County. And right now, we're funding roughly 1.7 million. So they're already operating at a deficit here in Beaufort County at 200, $200,000.
I, I had some specific questions too that I would like answered before I can vote on any increase for the solicitors. And they were answered, but I'm not comfortable with the 5% because it didn't really answer all my questions.
Are these, are these salary adjustments or?
Part of it, part of it is a salary adjustment. It's a retention issue, is my understanding, that they're having and some of the other circuits have raised their, their minimum starting salaries quite substantially. Let's see here, low is, is low 60s to 70 a year, but he says most other coastal counties have raised theirs more. Charleston County's 75,000, Horry County's 80,000. So I know there's inflationary issues that he's dealing with. I know he gets state funding as well, but, you know, this is, I don't think it's right to leave it flat. I know there's been some issues in the past, I don't know about those issues, but I know that I'm trying to, I think we should operate moving forward in a, in a fair manner.
Well, which committee would handle that? Is that you, Alice?
Finance.
Finance. I would like to send it back there to get some answers to these questions before we vote on that particular item.
Well, I was going to suggest and legal have told me that if we approve it on first reading, that we have a workshop because we have this question, we have your question, we have the question about the two planning peoples, can they go to green space? That's still being researched. We have a bunch of issues and then I have questions Mr. Passamit and I sent in and I, you know, we have to have a full discussion so the public can hear it rather than doing it by email. And I think, and Alice had questions and anybody else? Mr. Robinson answered ours, but he said he didn't get any other questions. It would be an opportunity for people to dig into the budget and I would like to do it for Denise Leves because she's got the grip on it, which is when?
June 7.
Next week.
Yeah, but instead of sending it back to finance, which is going to prolong it because Tom noted, we're on a timeline for the budget.
So what do you suggest?
I would suggest.
I suggest we do first reading pass and then have the workshop and we can alter it on a second reading, correct?
Yes.
So the first reading will include the money for DSN, Island Rec and the Solicitor and then we will go back and reconsider it, is that what we're saying?
It'd be by title only to move it forward.
By title only, to move it forward.
But that wasn't my question.
No, sir, we did change, we did add that to the budget, but we did not change the budget ordinance because you guys already had it in your packets. So it would go, if you vote on it, it would be approved by title only. And then all those changes would come to second reading.
Tom?
You know, I don't know that it's going to be by title only. You've got a ordinance, you've got a proposed budget, you could give it approval for first reading. I think you could then make a motion to refer it or you can make a, Joe can actually call, special call meetings of council if he'd like, but remember, your workshops are like your regular meetings. You have to have a quorum in order to even hear about it, to even talk about it. But that doesn't mean you shouldn't do it. I mean, I don't know that this is the best venue on the next two readings to dig into this, you know, deeply, but my, my recommendation would be that you go ahead, approve it for first reading and then consider, the chairman can consider holding a special workshops or one or more to get into it. I know they're not preferred, but I think that might be the way. And then if Denise is leaving next Friday, when are you leaving? Next Friday? We got 10 business days, nine business days.
You're going to be out of town for a little bit.
Okay, so here's my question. I know we have a, we have a fund balance that has adequate funding in it. Then when we have this first reading, will that include the money that was inadvertently left out of over $2 million and the other two items, the Solicitor and Island Rec? And then when we go to the workshop, it can be adjusted again because every time we do this, the numbers are going to be changing. So then this first reading by title only will include those adjustments, is that right?
Well, I think you're going to have, first of all, you have a motion and a, and a second to approve this budget ordinance.
Right.
If you're going to, it doesn't include, I don't think it includes these changes that you just mentioned, so.
Oh, it doesn't?
Well, you guys got the packets before changes were made.
Somebody would have to make the motion.
You'd have to make a motion to amend, then get the, a motion to amend approved, then approve the first reading and then maybe the chairman would then call some workshops.
Okay, it seems to me that some of this is essential to get done.
Yeah.
So then we could have a, we have a motion, oh, well, I need a motion to amend if we're going to include these three items.
Yes, sir.
Go to first reading and if they have to be adjusted again later, we can certainly start talking about them because I have an interest in talking about them as well when I'm not sitting in this chair.
Yes.
So, so I would like to have a motion to amend to include those items.
I'll make the motion to amend the proposed budget.
The items, Laura, specifically what Denise told us. Could you give us those numbers again?
Okay, yes, sir. So the first number is 2,678,000.
And what's that for?
$62. That is for the, a transfer out from the general fund into Fund 2441, which was disabilities and special needs.
Okay.
Can you say that fund one more time?
Yep, Fund 2441, DSN.
DSN.
And the number, the amount again is 2,678,062. That will increase the general fund's budget by that much along with the other two increases.
We have those numbers?
42,500.
Right.
For island recreation.
And if it's for Solicitor, it's, I think it was 88.5 for 5%.
I think the suggestion was 50,000, Tab.
That was a 3%.
It was 5% we were at.
Yeah, 50,000 was 3%, but then further discussion showed that we could potentially accommodate a 5% which would match the other outside agencies.
Let me, let me just say about the Solicitor, I don't have a problem with it, but he has Let me just say about the Solicitor. I don't have a problem with it. But he has chosen not to come before us and present, and has chosen to keep his budget flat because he didn't want to come before us. So obviously, you know, this is kind of an end around. So I mean, I think that we, you know.
Well, I actually took it upon myself to call it. Because after reviewing the budget, it just didn't seem right.
So is this a suggestion, Mr. Lawson, that we include the item for?
I can look at that.
We can discuss it, yeah.
Leave it in until we can discuss all three of those items at one time?
I'll second that. I'll second his motion.
Let me get the other number. What was that other number?
85.5.
$85,500 for the Solicitor's office.
Mr. Bartholomew, can I suggest you take that one separately?
I'm just going to take them together. We can go from there.
Okay.
All right. All right. I make a motion to amend the current budget before us to add $2,678,062 from Fund 2441, Department of Special Needs, to transfer from the general fund, as well as transfer $42,500 to Island Rec, and to appropriate $85,500 to the Solicitor budget, I believe also from the general fund.
That's right.
Is that?
And I'll second that.
Thank you.
Can we have a discussion on that? I know Island Rec is special to you guys, but we were limiting 5% to outside agencies. That's what we just did to the Solicitor. You're asking for a 34% increase for the Island Rec Center. And as I reminded you, Mr. Reeds, he never answered Ms. Howard's questions. And he never presented a line item budget. Here we are, just like the Solicitor.
Actually, he said he did. So I'm getting two pieces of information here. Frank, I'm surprised about that. Frank answered everything we've asked him.
Ms. Howard was the question.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Nobody's supposed to speak until the presiding officer calls on you. So if you don't mind, please. Thank you.
Go ahead, Tab.
I'm just saying, I was running that meeting as vice chair, and Ms. Howard asked, I don't know how many questions, and did not get any responses. And there was no line item budget presented. So if Ms. Howard wants.
Okay. Tom?
The only thing I know is that Frank Soul provided that, he told us. And if he didn't, we should have went back to him and just find out what's going on. Because he's very forthcoming with everything he gives.
Yeah. I think he's already been here two or three times, presenting everything in line items. And I'm surprised to hear, Alice, you didn't get that information.
Absolutely.
Sorry?
Alice, would you get that to me? I'll get that for you tomorrow.
Okay. So it's not a line item. It's, since we give them quarterly appropriations, they didn't present a line item budget like our departments do. But they did present a budget packet that had, I don't know, about four pages of information in it.
Yeah. I remember, I think Valerie sent an email back to him, thanking him for submitting it, that it was, I thought what you needed. But I mean, that's the way my faulty memory operates, you know. Mr. Passamit, did you have some comments? I can't, we can't hear you. Sorry, Joe. We can't hear you.
We're trying to get a speaker hooked up, so the people on Zoom can speak.
Well, can I go while they're setting that up?
Yeah, sure.
I want to spend some time with you, Larry. Yeah, I really wish you would have taken these separately. Because, yeah, I have the same concerns Mr. Lawson has about the Solicitor's office. They could have came and presented. And I mean, we are one of their, actually, I believe we are their biggest funder, correct?
I think so.
Out of four counties?
We provide 72%.
72%. And I've made this comment before. We provide 72%. And that's the exact number. It's literally what we do in the UN. And it's the same problem. You know, we're funding the majority and still not seeing anything out of it. Not saying we're not seeing anything out of Solicitor's office. But again, why isn't everybody else putting the same amount of skin into the game? So we're already paying 72%. And now they want us to pay even more of it. I get the salary part. I don't know how they have it structured, where their lawyers live. That doesn't mean those lawyers don't travel to those other counties to work. So I will have to vote down because the Solicitor's office is on there.
Let me see here. I think I'm hearing Mr. Cunningham making a suggestion that he wants to amend the amendment.
Well, let's try this. Why don't you see if the maker of the motion and the one who seconded it would withdraw, and then, even if you're inclined to do that, then you can make them one at a time.
Okay. Well, we can put the other two in. It doesn't seem to be a lot of objections to that. Is there?
Joe's on it.
That was my first recommendation before we started.
I know. Mr. Passamit, we might be able to hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. I think what we're doing is an unconscionable act. I am disturbed that we have a $2.6 million hold of bill because a department didn't produce their budget correctly. And what we're going to do is a recurring amount of money is going to be taken out of our surplus funds. So now we have to account for that $2.6 million, each and every year. We're going to do the same thing with Island Rec, and we're going to do the same thing for the Solicitor's office. If we're going to contend that we want a balanced budget, if we're going to put something in, we have to find out, what are we going to take out of this budget? I will vote no on this first reading.
Mr. Chairman, we currently fund DSN $2.4 million each year. Well, this year, we are. So that increase was about $200,000 in their insurance line items. It was just left out of this budget.
It was inadvertently left out.
It was inadvertently left out. I'm glad we caught it before for treating. But yes, it was.
I understand. Okay. I'm just dealing with the issues here of these three items. It appears that there is some objection, in particular to having one of the items removed. The maker of the motion and the second agree to take the Solicitor's item out of there and let the other two proceed?
No. Vote on it as a package. If it fails, and somebody else can make another motion, then visually it goes.
Okay. Well, then, with that refusal, we will call a question on the amendment. And the amendment is to include those three items for those three vendors. And you have the numbers that were made with the motion. Roll call, please, Brown.
Councilmember Bartholomew?
Yes.
Councilmember Reeds?
Yes.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Cunningham?
No.
Councilmember Dawson?
No.
Councilmember Glover?
Uh, no.
Councilmember Howard?
No.
Councilmember Lawson?
Mark Lawson, yes.
Councilmember Tavernet?
Yes.
Chairman Passamit?
No.
It's you, Larry.
And Vice Chair McGellin?
Nope. Fails.
6.5 fails. Or 5.6 fails.
So we will not be adding those items to change that. Now we will go to the first reading, which we have a motion and a second. And the first reading is the ordinance to make this, the appropriation for this budget for fiscal year '25 to go through. Is there any further discussion on that matter?
Is there a motion on the floor, Mr. Chairman?
There is.
Okay.
First and a second. Any further discussion on that? Okay. We call the roll again, please, Soprana.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Tavernet?
It's on the original. Yes.
Councilmember Bartholomew?
No.
Councilmember Brown?
No.
Councilmember Cunningham?
Yes.
Councilmember Dawson?
Yes.
Councilmember Glover?
Yes.
Councilmember Howard?
Yes.
Councilmember Lawson?
Mark Lawson, yes.
Councilmember Reeds?
Yes.
Chairman Passamit?
Yes.
Vice Chair McGellin?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item number 17 is the first reading of an ordinance to provide for the levy. Thank you, Denise. Thank you, Valerie. First reading of an ordinance to provide for the levy of tax for school purposes for Beaufort County for the fiscal year beginning July 1/24, ending June 30/25, and to make appropriations for said purposes. May I have a motion?
Show a move, Mr. Chairman.
And a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing no?
No milled increases.
Hearing, is there a discussion? Hearing no discussion, I'd just pass this without objection. Are there any objections?
Well, we have a presenter, if you want her.
Oh, sorry. I didn't know that. I apologize.
She's simply going to say, go ahead.
Good evening. Hi. Thank you for the time. I'm Jennifer Hamblin. I'm the Director of Budget at the Beaufort County School District. I just want to share two things. Number one, Ms. Tavernet has already mentioned, our council, our Board of Education unanimously certified our budget last Tuesday on the 21st. And I want to also reiterate that our budget this year requires no millage increase in both the operations budget and the debt service budget. That's all I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.
We call a question? I'd just pass this without objection. Are there any objections? Seeing no objections, matter passes. Thank you very much. Item 18 is approval of a resolution to approve the Economic Development Product Funding Request, which is $8.1 million for a three-year period. May I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion. Mr. Chairman, but I thought it was for five.
You'll second it, York? What was that question?
I thought it was for five years.
Says three-year period in the.
I thought the recommendation coming forward was, or the committee was for five years.
It is five years. The resolution says five, I believe.
Is the fiscal impact statement incorrect here?
If it says three years, then it is. Yes, sir.
So it's five years?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And this is a resolution. It's not an ordinance.
Right.
Correct.
Statement of policy.
Right. We have a first and a second. Is there discussion?
No, no, it is five years. All right?
It is five years, Mr. Dawson.
All right. Good enough.
I'm sorry, did you get a?
What about the second sentence there, Tom? Should the county have the ability to transfer this mill from another fund temporarily and for a period of up to three years? The funding for this request would not increase taxes. It will appropriate existing, reappropriate existing funds. Is that a five-year period as well?
Well, that's a good question. So the original resolution was for three, and so the AIS just carried over. Denise, does that, should that be five as well?
Thank you.
The resolution notes five years.
I'm asking you if the second sentence should be five years.
Probably.
That sounds like a contradiction if it isn't. So it should be five? Okay. Okay. Any questions on this? Anybody have any confusion on it? Is there any discussion on it? Seeing no discussion, I'd like to pass this approval of a resolution without objection. Are there any objections?
Did you get a motion? I'm sorry, a motion and a second?
I did.
Yes.
And now I'm just moving into the approval, Tom. Thank you. Glad you're all looking out for me. Anybody object? No objections, this matter passes. Item 19, approval of a resolution to commit funds to be provided from Beaufort County to the Technical College of the Low Country for the construction of the Arthur E. Brown Regional Workforce Training Center. May I have a motion for it?
I'll make a motion, thank you.
Thank you. And a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Discussion?
This is to, you know, approve the full request and to ask them to reimburse us.
That's the question I have here. It says to commit funds, but it doesn't say, well, it does probably say it in the background, but we should probably put it out there for anybody who has, anybody from the staff able to discuss this? On what the amount of the funds are that we are approving a resolution, considering approving a resolution for?
It's 7.5.
Thank you, John.
So this is $6 million that would be bond proceeds, should you approve the bond referendum that should come forward at the next finance committee. Is that where we're going? Yeah. Bond issuance referendum.
So this says that Beaufort County Council commits $7,500,000 for the construction of the Arthur E. Brown Regional Workforce Training Center. This is the language out of the resolution. Is that the amount, $7,500,000?
Yes, sir. That's correct. We talked, the bond agents we talked to about that predicts that the $6 million and the revenue, the $6 million would cover their, cover their cost. And the interest, interest received on that funds would cover the 7.5 million.
Okay. So this is approval of a resolution to commit funds in the amount of $7,500,000 to be provided from the county to the Technical College for the construction of the Arthur Brown Regional Workforce Training Center. Any further discussion?
Yes, unfortunately, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Logan.
Are we the only ones funding this project?
No.
No, it's state money.
Who else is helping fund?
May as well get up there and tell us, Denise.
So the bond issuance, we are issuing the bonds, but we are not paying for the issuance of the bonds. Those costs will come from TCL, and their debt payment will come from their revenue collected to, not a cost to the county. They have a current bond issuance that they're, I think they have one more year to pay off. We did this for them several years back. So we're doing the same thing again. And they pay for the entire payment, debt payment. So it's no cost to the county. Not to the general fund, not to any of our other funds. It comes strictly from their fund.
And the state is allocated $10 million, correct?
Yes, that's right.
And TCL itself is also putting up another two and a half.
Yes, they are. They're gathering funds from grants.
And I asked this question then, if they were going to go to Jasper County and surrounding counties. They said, yes, they're going to go to them to ask help fund.
Jasper County, they have funds. And I think Jasper County's made some type of commitment.
They've made.
Ask me how much.
Yeah, I read that too. They did make a commitment. They did go out and get funds from everywhere else. But we are not fun, I mean, it's not coming from the general fund.
Not a problem.
Yep.
Thank you.
Any further questions or discussion? Going to call a question without objection? Are there any objections to this? Seeing none, the matter passes.
Mr. Chairman, before you go on to the next one, those last two items we just passed, I'm not going to tell you, I understand all the creative financing here, Denise, but I just want to say thank you because you made it happen. Okay.
That's nice.
Think he's saying he's going to miss you, Denise.
That's nonsense.
That's what he did say, yeah.
For those that don't know, Denise has accepted a position in Dorchester County as the Deputy County Administrator, and she'll be leaving us shortly. And congratulations for that. Item number 20 is approval of a council of a resolution authorizing the interim county administrator to execute an agreement with the Friends of Fort Fremont to allow them to provide volunteer services to be performed at the Fort Fremont Preserve and History Center for the benefit of the county. May I have a motion, please?
I'll show a move, Mr. Chairman.
And a second?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, this will pass without objection. Are there any objections? Hearing no objections, the matter passes. Item number 21, approval of another resolution to support the recommendation to the governor of South Carolina for the nomination of the Beaufort County Carolina Bright Estuary System into the National Estuary System. May I have a motion, please?
I'll make the motion if David wants to second it.
Yeah, I'll second it. And I think it's supposed to be the Carolina Byte. I think there's a discrepancy there.
Carolina Bright, yeah.
Byte?
B-I-G-H-T?
Uh, I think.
Bright.
I thought we went over this last time, and it was bright.
It wasn't, okay.
Is it bright or bite? Do we know?
Bite. B-I-G-H-T.
It is B-I-G-H-T? Okay.
There you go.
Thank you. Thank you, Brian. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Do I have a motion and a second?
Yeah.
Any discussion?
Look at you checking.
No discussion. I'll pass this without objection. Any objections? Hearing none, this matter passes. Item 22, approval of a resolution to establish Beaufort County's Community Development Priority List. May I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you. And a second? May I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, matter should pass without objection. Are there any objections? Hearing no objections, the matter passes. Item 23, approval of a resolution to accept grant funds in support of Project RT6. May I have a motion, please?
I'll motion.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, this matter should pass without objection. Are there any objections? Hearing no objections, this matter passes. Item 24 is approval of a resolution authorizing the allocation of American Rescue Plan Act ARPA funds to Hargray, and entered to an agreement for use of the funds with Hargray for broadband service expansion on St. Helena Island. Fiscal impact, $163,000 funded by ARPA. May I have a motion, please?
I'd like to offer that, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Glover, a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Mr. Brown, it's a second. Any discussion? I wanted to say this is needed and welcome.
It is needed. And I brought this up in committee. I hope it goes through, and I know it's a much-needed project out there. I just have a problem with using taxpayer funds for, solely for a for-profit company to expand that service. So I'd be voting no on that, despite, I know it's needed. The extension is needed. We had these discussions for a while in the committee, and yeah, I have the same issue with it. It did not, it did not go out to bid. It was only sent out, the only contact we made was with Hargray, and that was confirmed with us during the presentation. I know it's ARPA funds. People can say, oh, it's not Beaufort County money, but it's still taxpayer dollars for a profit company. Fortunately, I cannot vote for it. I will abstain from the vote, just like I did last time as well.
Further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, all I wanted to say that one of the things that we've been asking for in rural communities is broadband. And sometimes when somebody comes knocking on the door, it's hard to say no. So there are other carriers out there that are trying to get funding as well, and those things will come. But this is the only carrier now that has come forward with this effort. So I think there may be a better deal out there. But as soon as we get some more competition, we have something that we can start building on.
Mr. Glover, with all due respect, though, we're letting them build a monopoly by doing this, though. So getting other carriers in here is going to be harder and harder to do when this continues to happen. And we're footing the bill.
There are other carriers there now. They're not providing the kind of services and stuff. So it's, yeah. I can tell you right now that I.
I think it's needed. I'm with you. I 100% agree.
I would just say this. At my church, we are right now paying two carriers just for services.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, so we can get services and stuff. But yeah, hopefully, we can end up with just one. But right now, we are paying two just to get the kind of services we need.
There are other carriers, but they are reluctant to take on these projects simply because in the rural area, the homes, the residents are so far apart until they don't see the, they don't see the benefits of making a profit, having to run those lines such long distance with very few houses tying into them. So Hargray has stepped forward and has actually taken on the project. So I applaud them for actually running these lines like broadband access internet for both ones and others.
They run the lines up to the house, and the homeowner has to pay for the service inside the house. So sometimes they run the lines there and nothing happens, which is unfortunate, because people who live there can't.
people who live there can't afford to pay for the service. And it's a whole other issue that needs to be addressed.
Okay, I'm gonna call a question unless there's further discussion.
I would, I would just say that when we did do the numbers, it's, I believe it was a hundred and twenty-five houses, and the average Hargray bill is a hundred and twenty-five, a hundred and twenty-five dollars according to their website. So, they do stand to make money within a couple of years to clear that hundred grand. Hundred and thirty-four homes, I'm sorry. I lowballed it. They stand to make more money than that.
I'm gonna call a question, take a vote, any, take the vote, listing objections on part of Mr. Cunningham?
I abstain.
Abstains, and an objection on Mr. Bartholomew. Everybody else is a yes vote. I take it you have that, Brenner? Thank you. So, the matter passes. Thank you very much. Moving into citizen comments. Are there citizen comments? Do I have a list? Okay. Just one?
Mr. Smith?
I was gonna say.
I think last time you were curious.
Mr. Smith, how are you?
Good. Evening, Mr. Smith.
Good evening, how y'all doing?
Good.
Good afternoon. First and foremost, I just want to say, I was gonna come out, my main focus today was just to talk about some of this water we, water we got in the counties in these field ditches. But when I heard, heard the county staff got up here and talk about these trash bags, plastic bags, and it failed, and then we said, they said that they still wanted the county, the staff, to work on that. That's a, that's a waste of our taxpayer's dollars. And have the attorneys, to have the attorney to come up here and, and talk about that? That's a waste of taxpayer dollars. We have kids that are losing lives every day in this county right here. We're not talking about how, how we can attract business owners to employ these kids and to employ these people to get jobs, to help out our community. That's the relevant conversation that we should be having. I seen Mr. Toodle, Mr. Toodle was, was, was in the back. I was waiting to see whether he was coming forward to saying how we're gonna build this and stimulate this, this economy in Beaufort County, besides the air station in, in, in our, in our school systems, in, in this government place. So, I'm a little rather disappointed in that. But anyways, I get down to, get down to the Nixon cranny. I'm, I'm coming here today because the fact of that, we have a lot of ditches on St. Helena Island, and I just, to Beaufort County, that are full of water. But we have an apartment, who's supposed to be doing that? Now, and some people may not like this. I don't see, I don't see where these guys are working at in, in terms of, of, of female or staff in terms of taking care of these ditches. I don't see where, where we're getting banked, or where they, they're actually, I see from time to time the tractors that are parked in the community, but I don't see where they're moving. Now, I've heard they move on the, on the, on the other side of the broad. And you know, I've seen where they have, I believe his name is Mr. Steven or, they have a, they have a, I was told one time, Jack can speak to the foreman or something like that. I, I think his name might be Mr. Steve, Mr. Steven or something? Is that who, is that who it is, Ms. Atkins? Is that who, okay, well, okay, well, guess he don't know. But anyways, I would like to see some, some of this, some of these ditches be dug. Also, I noticed into that we are, we are allowing a lot of building that's going on that was going to bluff down those that is, is happening in this side of town now. The deers, the deers are running more rapidly. We're cutting, allowing people to cut down all these trees. Where's the water gonna go? Where's the water gonna go? We have people who, who, that's their job to regulate that. Who's, who's doing that? Is everybody eyes closed? It's a lot of construction going on, you know, on this side of the broad now. Are we, are we gonna let it go on? Just, just a question. And Mr. Cunningham, you look, you look puzzled. Don't, don't, don't be puzzled. I'm just bringing these, you know, you look a lot of puzzled lately.
I'm puzzled because you said you want to stimulate the economy that comes with construction. That's why I'm puzzled.
Beyond that, you know, you have a funny sense of humor sometimes, but I just wanted to address you with that. All right.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
I think it's coming.
And that will close out the citizen comments at the end of the meeting. We are now going to go into executive session. I'll need a motion to do that.
Motion, Mr..
Second, and that will be for discussions of negotiations incident to a proposed contractual arrangement, law enforcement center conceptual plan, receive legal advice on matters covered by the attorney plan privilege that the Fusky Island Ferry Service, discussion of employment appointment compensation promotion, the motion discipline or release of an employee, a student, or a person regulated by a public body, or the appointment of a person to a public body. May I have a?
Prior to taking that action, should we make a motion to extend beyond eight o'clock?
I was gonna go ahead and let the chairman get a vote on this, and then ask him to solicit a motion to extend. Okay, so we'll pass this without objection. Are there any objections? Hearing no objections, this matter passes. We're going into executive session, and now I'll take a motion to extend beyond eight o'clock.
I'll make a motion to extend beyond eight o'clock.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, any objection? No objection? Thanks very much. The matter passes. If you'll excuse us, we're going into executive session, and then we will return and tell you if there's any action we have to take as a result of executive session.
I can reconvene this session of council and tell you we have come out of the executive session. And there are no matters needing a motion for any action to take place this evening. Thank you all very much for your participation in this event. Thank you.
Thank you.